Tom Carter, Franco, Gied, Melendez, Aubrey. I don't see Aubrey. Yeah, Aubrey's there. And Juliet Parker, and Zupiri, and of course, the mayor, Radkowski. So you have nine councillors.
Thank you very much. If everyone could stand for the salute to the flag, please. Mr. Goethe, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
For the nations to the land, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. We have a proclamation this evening. It is 2021-759, proclamation recognizing Michael Raugh Jr. This is on page three in the packet. Councillor Baumgartner, would you do the honors, please?
Proclamation recognizing...
Recording in progress.
Proclamation recognizing B. Michael Raugh Jr. Whereas Michael is the president and CEO of Chelsea Groton Bank, having 15 locations in southeastern Connecticut with assets totaling 1.5 million. And whereas 2021 marks Michael's 11th year as president of Chelsea Groton Bank. And whereas Michael is a 1981 graduate of the University of Rhode Island with a BA in economics. He was named to the Board of Directors of the American Bankers Association in 2020. And he serves on the Board of Eugene O'Neill Theatre Center, the Yale New Haven Health System, the Norwich Free Academy Foundation, the Norwich Community Development Corporation, the URI Harrington School of Communication and Media, the Providence Mutual Insurance Company, Chelsea Groton Bank Board and Foundation Board, and serving as past chairman of four, the CT Bankers Association, the Board of Directors for L&amp;M Healthcare, and the Chamber of Commerce of Eastern Connecticut. And whereas Michael has been an active board member for many civic organizations, and honored as Citizen of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce of Eastern Connecticut, and the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce, and named for Outstanding Leadership by the Boy Scouts of America Connecticut Rivers Council, the Rhode Island Chapter of American Planning Association, and the Rhode Island Sea Grant for Community Service. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Groton, does hereby congratulate B. Michael Raugh Jr. as the 70th Citizen of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce of Eastern Connecticut, and extends wishes for continued success, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 29th day of October 2021. Signed by our mayor, Patrice Kornutowski, Mayor of Tonnagong.
Thank you. And congratulations to Mr. Raugh on his recognition. All right, we are on to Roman numeral four, public hearings. We actually have two this evening. The first is 2021-6552, River Road Tree Removal Public Hearing. This is on page five. Madam Clerk, would you read the call, please?
The notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the town council in accordance with county charter section 5.5.3 and pursuant to town code section 13.5-124 on November 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Groton Senior Center, 102 New Town Road, Groton, Connecticut, and via Zoom, regarding an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals in the town of Groton. There also will be hearing comments for the tree removal project at 151 River Road. The full text of the draft ordinance is on file in the town clerk's office and on the town website at www.groton-ct.gov. To sign up to speak via Zoom, email council@groton-ct.gov or contact the town manager's office. This was dated in Groton, Connecticut, on 28th day of, actually in the paper that day, 28th day of October 2021. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So we had the sheets at the front of the room for signup, and I have no names signed up to speak on the River Road public hearing. Is there anyone here who did not sign up that would like to speak for the River Road public hearing? Going once? I don't think anybody online is here for that. Are there any people online here for that item, Madam Clerk?
No, thanks.
Not to my knowledge, except maybe the, there are citizens that live on River Road in attendance. I don't know if either Ms. Tillman or anyone else on River Road who's here.
Ms. Tillman or Mr. Brown, are you here for the River Road Tree Removal Hearing? I don't know if they're able to speak or not. Excuse me?
Yes. Is this a hearing for the trees?
Yes, it is.
Can I still say, quote, something?
Yes, one moment, please. I'm just checking in with the people that have been waiting online to see if they are here for that reason. Ms. Surf, I'm not getting any response, although I do see a chat there, but I can't tell what is in the chat because I don't have the issue here. There we go. What's it say?
Madam Mayor, we are not here to talk about the tree public hearing on River Road. Thank you.
Thank you so much for clarifying. Ms. Surf, if you wish to speak, you have the floor. I have the list, so I'll just record your, I'll record your name and address if you just state it as you normally would. If you come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Genevieve Surf, 6 Pearl Street, Mystic. Reason I'm late is because I was looking for the trees. It got dark on me. I couldn't find 655 River Road. It appears to be somewhere under the highway. But anyway, there are plenty of trees on River Road that obviously need to be cut down. And I think where these particular trees are, councillor Borlon suggested we might want to plant more trees, but there's already gazillion trees there, so that's not so much an issue. The one thing I did want to say, though, is that I spent a lot of time in Europe, and what they do there, they do not allow trees to grow above, well, first of all, most of the power lines are underground. But they don't allow trees to grow above the height of the roof of houses, or power lines, or anything that's at a height where if a tree fell down, it would get damaged. And so they, you know, they prune the trees consistently over the years. And it's quite cute. And if you remember all these Impressionist paintings, you see these trees with all kinds of little stumpy branches. They're still very pretty in the spring. It's not like what happens here where the utility companies come, and if there's a big tree growing over the wires, they literally cut the tree in half down the middle, lengthwise, and leave a very ugly half the tree, which is still dangerous, on the other side of the power lines. And they feel they've cut down enough of the tree that it won't affect the power lines. But that's completely, you know, if you go, if you go to where there are power lines along any one of these roads, you'll see what they do, and it's completely unacceptable. It's not enough, and inevitably, when it's big storms, we all lose power. So I would really like to recommend, perhaps, a program where we could start to do this in town so that we wouldn't have power outages, especially with climate change and all that. We're going to get bigger storms. And where the Public Works Department, which I know they have quite a bit of free time in the summer, where they could start to prune these trees at the height of the power lines. In other words, don't let them, don't let any part of the tree overhang the power line. It would look a lot prettier than what's currently being done, and it would be a lot less dangerous. And we wouldn't lose power quite as often. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for the River Road trees? Okay, seeing none, we will close that public hearing at 6:44. All right, next on the agenda is the 2024-1-10 Introduction of Ordinance in Public Hearing to Regulate Short-Term Rentals. This is page seven. Madam Clerk, I'm not sure if you want to read the call again, or if once is sufficient.
I think once is sufficient.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would just like to give Mr. Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, the opportunity to introduce this before we begin the citizens' petitions. Mr. Reiner, thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Before you tonight is the Short-Term Rental Ordinance, a draft of that for a public hearing. The main purpose of this ordinance, as currently drafted, is really to regulate and to get a registration system to understand how many short-term rentals we have, and to have some basic rules in place of what is expected in an application to have a short-term rental. I should also state that the intent of this ordinance, as currently drafted, I believe by the council, is to not have this ordinance apply to Noank, to Groton Long Point, or to the city of Groton. That is something that, if that is the intent of the council, we should add a line at the end of the ordinance that that is the intent. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. All right, we have quite a few people signed up to speak on this. So we will go with, let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight people online, and we have quite a few here. So we'll begin with Mr. Davis. If you could come up to the podium, please. State your name and address for the record. If you have written comments, you're welcome to submit those as well. They'll be attached to the minutes of the meeting. John Davis, followed by Michael Kane.
Is it okay to have the maps down? We have them on here.
Is there, is there enough that he can keep one for the minute? Are there enough that he can keep one for the minute, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I got a bunch.
Do you have, oh.
There's a plenty here. Do you need more?
Thank you. No, we're good. I just need one for myself, and then Mr. Bird has it for the clerk.
So, you're all right. So, good evening. My name's John Davis. I live on Shore Ave. in Groton, and have been working on this issue for a long time in the city and the town. So I really appreciate this group dealing with the issue and trying to, you know, bring some resolution to it. I spent a lot of time today studying the town zoning regulations. I happen to own, I'm very proud of this personally, a $30 printed copy of the city zoning regs. So today, I really spent time on the town ones to kind of check my assumptions about it all, if you will. So my view is kind of short and quick, which is, I looked at the regs, and there's a section, it's called Section 4 or 4.9, that addresses permitted uses. Not all the permitted uses ironically are allowed. What they mean is types of uses. I think really what it meant was in the residential section of zoning regs, there are types of uses. That's in Section 4.9. There are 17 categories, and not all of them, in fact, are allowed. But they're addressed one way or another. One of those 17 categories is called hotel-motel. And it's very explicit, a hotel-motel is not allowed in any of the four residential zone districts of the town of Groton. There's big Xs there, which means it's not allowed. The town zoning regulations, you know, written by previous people, not, you know, kind of not a come-lately definition, is a hotel or motel is a building or buildings providing transient lodging to the general public. Transient lodging to the general public. So my view, very simply, is that the proposed draft ordinance, in fact, would further kind of take the town down the road of not adhering to its own zoning regulations. It would be, if you will, in my opinion, not everybody's, a further violation of looking the other way, ignoring it, not regulating it, in fact, allowing it. So I just think, well-intended, the ordinance really starts off on the wrong foot by validating, if you will, the existence of short-term rentals. What I recommend is that there be a moratorium. Not, oh, people are speeding on our street at 80 miles an hour, we've got to keep the kids farther away on the lawn. I think really, if the zoning regs, not if, the zoning regulations do not allow such use, hotel-motel transient lodging in residential districts, therefore, you stop it. I think kind of the administrative body, if you will, the government of the town has a responsibility to do so. And of course, you know, I feel that way also about the city. I would just stop it. Not in a mean-spirited way, but just simply, it's got to stop. In effect, I think what Noank, or at least my view of what Noank concluded was here, it's not allowed, let's get back to basics, let's enforce the rules. Then, after the moratorium, then simply I would recommend that the new town council, whenever they formulate and get together, kind of take on the task of defining how we're going to go about resolving this.
You have one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. So for the councillors that are at home, Mr. Davis pretty much went through everything that was on the paper, but this will be included in the minutes for them. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next is Michael Kane, followed by Sima Evans.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Michael Kane, 51 Jupiter Point Road. Congratulations to everyone who won the election, and welcome evenings off for those who didn't run. I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I see this as a starting point for regulating short-term rentals. But I would ask you to consider putting the brakes on and backing up with this. I think it's somewhat premature in that we had a conversation about this issue on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe, more than a year ago. And staff was supposed to get back to us with feedback and ideas as how we would regulate this. It seemed at that point that the issue, the biggest issue was enforcement. Zoning officer doesn't work on the weekends. I see this as a zoning issue, and it isn't addressed in our zoning regulations at this time. We need to do that. I was a little surprised to hear Mr. Reiner is presenting this because we haven't had any communication. In fact, I didn't know about this ordinance until this afternoon. I got a flurry of phone calls from other people, and it was never sent to me. And it wasn't sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this ordinance, I don't know what. It seems to me that there's, this is a starting point. It's absolutely necessary that we know this information. But I don't, I don't see how we can allow this kind of use in residential neighborhoods. The, I mean, it was pointed out to you that hotel-motel is for transient people, and they're supposed to provide daily cleaning. And they may provide food and beverages. That's what a hotel or motel is. This is essentially the same thing, but they don't clean them daily. I don't, I don't see what, how it's any different than that. I don't think anyone in this room would like to have some, a business operating next to their house just sort of on the fly. And I think that we need to really, we do need to regulate these things. And I think that the public needs to weigh in. I think that this, the fear that I have, the greatest fear that I have with this at this point is that this sort of is inviting people to have these things. It's allowing them, essentially, so long as we have their name and some other information, contact information. I think we really need to slow it down, get the regulations in place, decide if we want to even do this, and then have this ordinance as part of a larger process and a larger package that either allows these things or doesn't. But I think that this is inviting a lot of confusion. That's all. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Next is Sima Evans, followed by Jeff Gordon. Can we just ask that everyone silence their devices, please? Thank you. It's very pleasant sound, though.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And also, congratulations to everyone on your win or on your, your lack of super-busy evenings. So I wanted to talk less about the specifics of this ordinance and more about the process. I understand that the Planning and Zoning Commission in the town of Groton was enabled by Connecticut General Statute 8 through 8-20, which lays out the characteristics and powers of the commission, and that it was specifically established through a town ordinance on June of 1956, and then amended subsequently. That ordinance lays out the powers, both generally and specifically. And of those specific powers includes, and I'm quoting here, that they are authorized to regulate the erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, or use of building or structures and the use of land. So to my mind, short-term rentals are certainly a use of a building or structure or land. And I think the process that the town council has followed has been flawed because you need to have Planning and Zoning Commission involvement in this. This is their bailiwick. And they have not been notified or even engaged in this discussion yet. And like some other issues addressed recently by this council, I think that you failed to engage all appropriate Groton officials in your deliberations. And so I am asking you to step back and go through a process that engages the right commissions and the right parties in the town to move forward on this. And I do think that the P&amp;Z has a stake in helping to develop this. And that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Gordon, followed by Bruce McDermott.
My name is Jeff Gordon. I live on 134 Edgecombe Street in Mystic. I'm here in support of short-term rentals. I personally have an Airbnb that I manage. Mystic is, I live in Mystic. I live within the realm of Edgecombe Street and Mystic Noank Library, walkable to downtown Mystic. It's a tourist town. It's a beautiful place. People come from all over and love to come to Mystic. That's why many of us are here. We benefit from all of the tourist activities that are designed, the renaissance of restaurants in our town. And so people want to come. For me, the short-term rental is a hospitality issue. It's, we're welcoming guests and people to our community to share in the good things that we're able to enjoy as well. When I travel, I like to use Airbnb personally because it gets me into a part of town that I wouldn't be if I was sequestered in with hotels and other things. I don't think that anybody who comes and stays in my apartment is confusing it with a hotel. They know that it's a part of a neighborhood. They know that my family lives downstairs. They are the most courteous people we've almost ever met. And I feel like it creates an opportunity for families to be able to travel and enjoy our community where they can have more than one room, have a kid in a room, and they can sleep there, and not have it break the bank because we're not charging what a hotel would charge for two full rooms. So I just think it's good for our community. I've never had any complaints from my neighbors. One of my neighbors is here in support of it. And so I think I can speak for myself and anybody else who's in the Airbnb rental community that we're all very open to being regulated and being on a list and signing, you know, letting people know we're there, and who to contact, and all that stuff seems like a great idea. Because, yes, I understand that there's an occasional bad apple, but I honestly have never had a bad apple in two years of doing this, and no complaints from any neighbors. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Next is Bruce McDermott, followed by Vanessa Gantos.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of you who decided to renew your commitment. I do have some thoughts on short-term rentals.
Could you give your name and address, sir, please?
What's that?
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bruce McDermott, 328 Noank Road. I'm on the Beautification Committee for the town. We have really only one specific goal, and that's to make the town more attractive with plantings and visual art so that people will want to come here and live here. We don't want an attractive Groton to be an economic driver. We have a situation with short-term rentals working against this effort. People are buying properties, taking them out of available housing stock for the purpose of profit. I don't mind a short-term rental where the owner lives there and rents out a room or a floor. That's perfectly okay. But short-term rental people really don't care about our neighborhood or how it impacts their business, just how it impacts their business prospects. They have no skin in the game or interest in the welfare of the neighborhood. And that's what I'm concerned with. I do not want to see our neighborhoods eviscerated by these people coming in and buying up houses simply to make money. Noank realizes this and has banned them. The other problem with short-term rentals is that they not only eliminate potential housing for permanent residents, which anchor a neighborhood, but unless the owner lives in that house, there's no break on any noise or bad behavior. We have no ordinance about excessive noise that I'm aware of. We need to limit STRs to only owner-occupied dwellings. At the very least, an ordinance that requires any STRs to have quiet hours should be promulgated. It should be like after 9 o'clock, for instance. And the proposed minimalist fines. Chris, that will do nothing to stop any of these things from happening. They're way too small. The character of Mystic has changed drastically over these last few years. These STRs are obvious and becoming ubiquitous. Planning wants to figure out just exactly what we're dealing with. I suggest that all they have to do is open up their computer in the morning and check Airbnb, which I did this morning, putting in a couple of dates just at random, December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, because most of these places for two or three days. 169 listings came up. And that's just at a random kind of thing that I attempted to do. There will be, I'm sure, more during the summer, probably less during the winter. I don't think we need to study this problem to depth. I think we need to act. The town council has to be courageous here. It has an obligation to promote and preserve the quality of life or the good of the community. That's us. The Oral School Development is a good example of how development can get out of hand. We have this opportunity to stop this usurpation of our housing stock. I implore the council to act quickly and with serious regulation to save us from this pernicious profiteering STR blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Vanessa Gantos, followed by Bonnie Wardle. I apologize if I said it wrong. Warden or Wardell? I can't tell.
Hi. My name is Vanessa Gantos. I live at 16 DeBalle Road, Groton. And I'm here to speak both in favor of short-term vacation rentals and also to encourage you to consider the two different types of vacation rentals that you're being presented with. One is an entire home being rented out and no owner present, whereas the other would be a portion of a home rented with the owner present at all times. Those are two very, very different types of vacation rentals. One affects the housing stock. One affects the quality... One affects the quality of the neighborhood experience. One affects the number of community members who are available, like you are, to contribute to the betterment of our neighborhoods and schools and communities. And having an entire home rented over and over and over again by strangers with no owner present doesn't do much to benefit this area. I have a guest room in my house that we rent out on Airbnb. I meet everyone who checks in. I give them a folder full of menus from local restaurants. I recommend places where they can go to do their shopping. I tell them where they can go see birds or go for a hike. So they're really given a lot of opportunity to engage in our local businesses and our local communities. And there's continued conversation, both before they arrive, while they're here, and then even afterwards. They'll send me notes, or they'll sign the guestbook, just saying how much they enjoyed being a part of our community. And that is really an important key to making a decision about how and where to regulate them. And I think by excluding certain areas of Groton Town, it's going to create perhaps more confusion and more friction. So I feel like having rules that work for one part of town should be able to work for everyone. And I think that that, especially considering how many people have turned Airbnb to cover their expenses over the last year and a half while they were laid off of work, or trying to find a way to be home with their kids and do distance learning and still support themselves and pay the mortgage. Airbnb had some big benefits for local families, who were able to rent out their guest room or, you know, guest suite or the rooms over their garage. So regulation makes sense, making sure that they have the proper facilities, bathroom facilities make sense, making sure that the taxes are being paid, which is paid directly to the town, it's my understanding, by Airbnb, because it gets taken out of my money, so I sure hope it's showing up here somewhere. And if you regulate it and you're aware of what's going on, it can be something that is beneficial to everyone. And so I hope that when you're considering this, you'll understand that there are two very different types of rentals in the pool, and perhaps one may be the source of most of the concern and not the other. Because I feel like a lot of Airbnb owners are very comfortable with having rules clearly laid out, you know, and following them. So hopefully, you'll take that in consideration. Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Bonnie Wardell, followed by Bill Ferguson.
Hi. Congratulations, everybody. I'm here to talk against short-term rentals.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, sorry. Bonnie Wardle, 4 Conrad Street, Mystic, walking distance to downtown Mystic. Okay. This is going to be a common theme here. I'm against short-term rentals in residential areas, especially the way they're impacting Mystic. It was actually until a few weeks ago, I was under the assumption that they were not permitted in Mystic. I was told they are, and I have the zoning regs here. Bed and breakfasts are only allowed in residential areas with a special permit and conditions. So what's the difference between an Airbnb and a regular B&amp;B? They're both short...one's a short-term rental guest, and the other one's a lodger's. Hotels and motels are not allowed, and rooming and boarding houses are not allowed. So you really needed to get the zoning permission. I agree with that involved. I did the same thing the other gentleman did about a month ago. I went online. I looked at Airbnb vacation rental by owner and Booking.com, and I know there's at least two others. I went to three different dates. I found over 30 rentals, which were complete apartments or whole houses. I know where there's whole houses that are being rented in Mystic, and that's all they do. This is taking housing out of the housing supply in neighborhoods. I like...we just had two new families move in in the last couple of years with little kids and stuff. It's great to see that. And this will kind of price these people out because they're getting all the advantages of a residential area, and it's a purely commercial activity. It's renting houses. It's lodging. It's a little mini hotel. So the main concerns, I guess, are noise, parking, and like trash and things like that. I would say that probably 90 to 95% of the rentals are going to be excellent, but I agree that the fines here are not adequate. The...by the way, on Airbnb, you know, you could just bill those fines to the renters who incur them if someone rents on your house. So it does nothing to the owner. These regulations allow people to be off-site, never...you don't even have to see the house according to this, these kind of regulations you have here. All you have to do is buy it as an investment property. So to preserve the character of the neighborhoods, I would just say, if you want an Airbnb, just follow all the bed and breakfast regulations. You already have them in the zoning code. You have to have parking, it says, according to bed and breakfast regulations here. It limits how many people you can have, 12 on a residential area, two people per bedroom. There's lots of regulations already in here for this. So I'm not really sure why we're even going with this when we already have regulations for bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. I'm not sure why it's considered different. So I'm just really urging you to step back, put a moratorium, no new ones, and...by the way, I have had...I know I'm a little bit...there was...last year, there was a rental that I could hear a half a mile away, so that does happen. It was a whole-house rental, by the way, not a person...an apartment or a room in someone's So that's basically...a lot more issues, but basically, you regulate bed and breakfast now. Just say a short-term rental is the same thing as a bed and breakfast. You don't even have to provide breakfast on a bed and breakfast, so I'm not sure what the difference is here. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Bill Ferguson, followed by Kathy Carrero.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ferguson. I live on 118 Edgecombe Street, Mystic, Connecticut. Seems like only yesterday I was with some of you. I just wanted to congratulate everyone who won yesterday, but I'm here to talk about...I'm here wearing a couple of different hats. I'm the president of the Downtown Mystic Merchants, and as short-term rentals, they're supportive of what happens downtown. I, too, obviously, live on Edgecombe, and I'm walking distance to downtown. And one of the things that short-term rentals alleviate, and Mr. Reiner and I have been on a commission talking about Mystic parking, is that it alleviates parking issues in downtown because they obviously can park at the house and walk. They're also is a driver in that they help the restaurants and the shops, and again, alleviate parking issues for downtown by being able to walk into downtown or ride a bike if they're not within walking distance. And as a...taking that DMM hat off, and as a neighbor, people...all the interactions I've had with the short-term rentals have been positive in the sense of they know they're part of a neighborhood. I have a dad joke on the corner of my house, and the people who own the short-term rentals stop by and say how much they enjoy reading it each morning when they go for their walk or go downtown. So I think...I don't feel like they're bringing any negative energy to a neighborhood, as is often been spoken about tonight. So, all right, thank you, and congratulate everybody, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Kathy Carrero, followed by Paul Beal. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Kathy Caffaro, and I live at 13 Warren Ave in Mystic. And I'm just hoping that you guys listen to regulate short-term rentals slightly better than what we have in the ordinance that has been drafted. They are growing at an insurmountable rate in our area, and there are many negative effects associated with them. And in my small neighborhood of about 40 people, there is three...I mean, eight, and three of them are direct neighbors across the street, to the left, and then in the back. So we kind of have a good grasp on what's happening through observation. We've seen a lot of reckless driving in the neighborhood. People throw trash. There's a lot of off-leash pets, which is kind of interesting. There's just a high volume of strangers, and some of them are quite inappropriate, and they can be very disruptive. And they're definitely growing a lot more since even last year. People have talked about how there's maybe 30, but really, I've done...in 2021, in early spring, I had done a search, and these are just for the standalone ones that could be possibly a long-term rental instead. There were about 125, and now, in October, on October 1st, when I did a search, there were 263 standalone, and those could potentially be long-term rentals that are now being taken away from people in the community. And I'm also a real estate agent, so every weekend I get to kind of console people who are driving an hour and, you know, commuting to Electric Boat and trying to find housing. So that's quite interesting as well. And that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Paul Beal, followed by Michael Schaller.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paul Beal. I live at 7 Borough Street in Mystic with my family, and I have been on both sides of the short-term rental fence. First was...the first time I even heard of a short-term rental, it was our neighbors across the street, and they had a big old captain's house, and they would rent it out. And of course, I thought, there goes the neighborhood. But then a funny thing happened. I started to notice that the Gleissons took better care of their house than anybody else in the neighborhood, and they have to. You have to if you have a short-term rental. I found that out later on. The second thing that I noticed was that families would come together, and we would share, or they would share Mystic with them. I mean, we're all lucky enough to live here, all right? But people come from all over the place. Mystic, Connecticut is the number-one tourist attraction in all of Connecticut, and so it allows us to share it with people who aren't lucky enough to live here. It drives the economy. It makes those nice restaurants where we can go downtown. You know, there's a lot of benefits to it. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered, but I don't think that...I think that a lot of it could be fear-based. You know, now we have an Airbnb. We rent out the whole house, and, you know, we have families come. They're families. There's families that come there, and they stay there. They're in the neighborhood. We have had no problems as far as any kind of shenanigans are concerned. In the Airbnb handbooks that we hand out to people when they come to the...to stay at our rentals, there are quiet hours, all right? There are certain quiet hours, you know, that are to be adhered to, all right? And we also have a good relationship with our neighbors, who will call us if there's something that is a concern, you know? But that's never happened, all right? So I don't think that fear should drive any decision-making processes, you know? I think that's more fear of the unknown than anything else, is you have to find out what the...how Airbnb's work and how people treat them in order to really make a good decision about whether or not they should be allowed or they shouldn't be allowed. You know, people have...there are a couple of things that I heard earlier today that kind of made me cringe a little bit. It's like, the hospitality business, yeah, you can make money. You can make money doing anything, but it's really...it's about the hospitality. It's about the sharing. It's about providing people with an experience that they can't get in a hotel, you know? It's about giving them that apple pie when they walk in the door. You know, all of a sudden, it's just like, well, you know, you can go to the Hilton, and you're not going to get the apple pie, you know? But you are going to get it if you go to our house, all right? It's about the bottles of water that you have in, you know, ready for them. It's the creamer. It's the curry. It's all of that stuff. You're not going to get that at a hotel. The last thing I wanted to say was that the bed and breakfast model is failing, all right? Most of the bed and breakfasts that were in town have closed. I think that there's just the Mermaid Inn that's left, all right? And, you know, unless you want to get outside of town. So there is an evolution to this process, and it's not a bad one. And anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Last signed up here is Michael Schaller. Could be. Say it again, sir. Scanlon? Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Scanlon. I live in Mystic. I live at 83 Pear Lane in Mystic, but I also own rental property in downtown Mystic.
So I have 26 Water Street listed here, sir?
26 Water Street is a property that is Airbnb rental, okay? And it's been an Airbnb rental for 10 years. So Airbnb is not...or this whole concept is not new. And I will have to share with Mr. Kane, my surprise. I learned about this whole thing, I believe it was Sunday or yesterday, the little article in the paper. I never heard about it. And I've been in land use for 40 years, and this is a zoning issue. I have no idea why it's before a town council if it hasn't even had zoning, you're absolutely talking about land use. But that aside, Airbnb and VRBO and all these other things, they're a vehicle. People use that for many reasons, okay? People do abuse opportunities, okay? And as a property owner, it's up to you to make sure that doesn't happen with your property. These corporations like Airbnb and VRBO, they're very stringent with their rules. If you've ever tried to rent one of these properties, okay, first off, you have...they have to know who you are. You have to prove who you are. You have to use a credit card, okay? You can't pay cash. It's a credit card, okay? You have to reserve a property, okay? Then you...you can't...if you want to go to a VRBO or an Airbnb rental, you're going to pay a security deposit, which is a nominal fee would be a couple of hundred dollars. I've seen $500. You're going to pay rental fees, which can be $200, $300 a night, okay? So if you're going for a long weekend, you're starting to talk real money now, okay? And there is a service fee, okay? So it's not cheap to go to one of these places, and you are at risk if you violate the rules, okay? You will not be allowed to rent from them ever again. They have insurance policies that are available to the owners to cover risks, okay? And it's a well-organized business, and there certainly are places where it probably isn't appropriate. But the Mystic area, it's the lifeblood of Groton, and people love Mystic. We've had literally people from all over the world, okay? And we've yet to have a negative comment in 10 years, okay? We've yet to have a single complaint from a neighbor in 10 years, okay? So there is a responsibility. It could use some regulation, okay? But this is a zoning issue. Zoning should be left to deal with this. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have several people online. Madam Clerk, we're...Ms. Surf, we're going to the people online first that have signed up, and then we'll come back and open it up to the floor here. Madam Clerk, are you still with us?
I can see...yeah, I can see them.
Excellent. So Tom Bradham is first, please. I can't see the list anymore, so I'm assuming Mr. Bradham is still with us.
He's on the list, but I don't...I'm trying to allow him to talk. I didn't...I was not made...can you hear me now? There you go.
Yes, Mr. Bradham.
Can I hear you? Thank you.
Thank you. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bradham, and I live at 7 Gravel Street in Mystic. As some of you may recall, I've spoken to the council before on this issue, and I was on the Short-Term Rental Working Committee formed by the council about two years ago, I believe. I'm appearing before you tonight to voice my opposition to this proposed ordinance. This proposed ordinance is poor legislation because it de facto legitimizes all types of short-term rentals in our town and conflicts with the town's own zoning regulations by allowing commercial lodging facilities in residential areas. The ordinance itself in Section 2 defines a short-term rental as, quote, "the use of a dwelling unit in whole or in part for transit lodging for compli- or in part for transient lodging for compensation by renters," end quote. Transient lodging is a phrase commonly associated with hotels, motels, Airbnbs, et cetera. Groton's own zoning regulations do not permit hotels, motels, and transient lodging like Airbnb in residential districts. Despite these zoning regulations, we have seen these past few years the enormous growth of pseudo-hotels and other transient lodging in our neighborhood. Our town officials have chosen not to enforce the already existing zoning regulations despite our complaints. Now, I am not talking about the occasional beach house rental or the owner-occupied mom and partner over the garage. I am talking about big corporations buying properties in our neighborhoods. Let me tell you a story. Last spring, a two-family house at eight Pearl Street in Mystic was sold for two times its appraised value to, quote, "eight Pearl Street LLC," end quote. Within two weeks, this two-family property that used to be a home was an Airbnb. The description boasted that this eighteen-seventy-three house in the historic district of Mystic can host ninety-nine guests for weddings and events, and can easily sleep sixteen people. Eight Pearl Street LLC is a Connecticut corporation formed on June ninth, two thousand twenty-one. It is one of many shell companies owned by Habakkut Capital Group LLC of Bronx, New York. Known as H Capital Group, this is an asset investment company owning properties from Mystic to Steubenville, Ohio. They boast of owning and managing thousands of apartments. Recently, the company has expanded into, quote, "the incentive short-term rental market," end quote. Unfortunately, this story is repeated every day by investment companies buying homes in our historic neighborhoods of Mystic and converting these homes into pseudo-hotels. The council needs to act to stop this practice. I think the council has two options. One, do what the zoning commission did. Use the authority granted you by the town charter in section five point four point three and direct the town manager to enforce the existing zoning regulations that do not permit transient lodging in residential areas. Or, two, start over. Direct the town manager to develop an effective short-term rental ordinance for Groton. Contract with an expert firm like Granicus Host Compliance to develop an ordinance that licenses, regulates, and enforces the type of short-term rentals that best meets the needs of people who live in our neighborhoods.
You have one minute, sir.
During the past year, I've read the various consultants' reports on the lack of available housing in Groton for our growing workforce, the lack of affordable housing for our seniors and families, and the lack of parking in downtown Mystic. I see the traffic and litter problems burdening our neighborhoods every day. These issues are intertwined with the short-term rental issue before you for discussion tonight. In closing, I want to emphasize to you, we want homes in our neighborhoods, not hotels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradham. Next on the list is Sultan Ahmed.
I don't see him on the list.
I don't see him.
He was online at the beginning of the meeting.
Nope, he must be gone now, but maybe he'll come back.
Okay. That's followed by George Davis. Mr. Davis was also online earlier.
He's here. Let me see.
I'm here.
Go.
Yeah, the floor, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is George Davis, and I live at seven Gravel Street, Unit One, in Mystic. I'm here tonight to express my opinion regarding the short-term rental ordinance. To be clear, I'm not talking about the occasional house rental, or renting your house by the week just for the summer, or renting out a room. I'm talking about commercially-run, short-term rental properties in residential areas, specifically in the Mystic historic district. The unfortunate fate to live next door and share a driveway with a short-term rental, or it is referred to in the ordinance, a transient lodging. In the historic district of Mystic, the houses are old, small, and crammed together. I can tell you from experience that transient lodging is a hazard, and it's a disruption to the neighborhood. It also reduces the value of my property, and no one wants to buy a house next to an Airbnb. But let's, let's call it what it is. It's a hotel. It just doesn't have an office. It's a commercial lodging entity owned by a limited liability corporation, operating in a residential area twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, with no on-site management, supervision, or control. In the Mystic area, there are at least twenty-four boutique hotels advertised on Airbnb at just an easy walk from my home. People register online at Airbnb, fill out the form, pay their bucks, and show up at the door. There's no control over who, what, or when people show up. Some people are nice. Usually, they're the ones that have kids. Most are belligerent, loud, and they're here to party. They have little respect for others, or they're private. If they rent the two units next door totaling four bedrooms, sometimes only five people show up, but many times fifteen people show up. They have no idea where they sleep. They don't care what restrictions are listed online, posted on the wall of the building. They are on vacation, and they're here to have fun. They know that no one is checking in when they arrive. Pets are also welcome. The dogs tell them sometimes howl for hours if they're left alone. At nine Gravel Street, over the last two years, more than one thousand, one hundred guests and five hundred and fifty distinct cars and trucks have come and gone. The disruption due to the sheer volume and congestion of people and cars is bad enough in a residential area, but the real problems start when the partying begins. The fellows of the neighbors who enforce the rules are called the police. The owners don't care. They got their money. They plead ignorance, and the police get tired of showing up. The neighbors become the bad guys and get threatened by the guests and the owners, and told to mind their own business. This is a high-volume, profitable business with no control. Since there is money to be made, more people are doing it. It is already out of control. This ordinance does nothing to protect our unique neighborhoods or the rights of other homeowners. This ordinance, as written, will allow anyone in a residential district to turn their house into a short-term rental as long as they put their names on the list. My preference is to be like knowing and not permit hotels and motels or any commercial enterprises in residential districts. But for me, the question is, why would you allow transient lodging in an area that is zoned as a residential district?
You have one minute, sir.
If you make this exception, why even have zoning? De facto, this ordinance rezones the areas affected without the input of the zoning commission. I don't feel that a person who owns a house in a residential district has the right to turn that property into a commercial enterprise, define and establish zoning regulations, and turn the neighborhood upside down. I'm opposed to this ordinance. It is not mitigating the disruption that short-term rental rentals have on the neighborhood, properties, and the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Renee Madison?
She can talk now?
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Thank you for, my name's Renee Madison. I live at twenty-seven Gravel Street in Mystic. And I echo some of the, the conversation that's being held here with some of my, the residents along our neighborhoods here. And I strongly, so I have, I have mixed feelings. I understand about people that maybe rent something in their house, and they're there, they're living there with the people, they're, you know, managing it. There's, you know, there's somebody to go to when there's problems. But certainly, these commercial enterprises that are coming in and buying up houses, that are just, you know, turning these, our neighborhoods into hotels, it's, I'm totally against it. I think if we even allow it for residents to have, again, you know, rent out rooms or whatever in their own, in their own homes, if we go with that, it needs to be regulated as well. But definitely, these commercial, we got to put an end to these companies coming in and just buying up houses and then, you know, putting it on Airbnb. And I didn't come, I don't live in this neighborhood to actually, you know, live next to something like that. It's a residential neighborhood, and I want to keep it that way. And I can tell you on Gravel Street that we have people walking around that clearly are not from, and I've asked people, where are you staying? And they would say where they're staying, in an Airbnb locally. And they don't know where to go. They ask, they, yeah, they come down with kayaks. They want to put it in the water. They don't, you know, nobody tells them that they, this is all private property down here, so they, they go on our properties. It's just, it's been a mess, and it's getting worse. And this ordinance has to stop because it is, I agree, it's kind of opening the door to say, yeah, you know, we're thinking about it, and yeah, maybe we can make it work. I think, I agree that the zoning needs to get involved. We need to have, I mean, as many people as possible made aware of this and voice their opinions. And this is just the beginning. So I really believe that we shouldn't go any further without actually, you know, coming up with a better plan than just, you know, pushing out an ordinance that really is not effective, and it's not going to be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Madison. Michael Sarason?
I don't see him.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, he must be someplace else.
Yeah, no, I'm on, I'm on.
Oh, you're using Renee's. Okay, gotcha.
I also live at twenty-seven Gravel Street in Mystic, and it's really a fundamental question here that's before the council tonight, and that is, is transient lodging an allowed use in a residential neighborhood? And the answer is no. And I think it's just that simple. We have been inconvenienced, nuisanceed by renters with trash on our lawn trespassing on our properties. We have a house that is somewhere on our property, about two houses on our property. We have probably about five thousand square feet. If I wanted to turn this place into a short-term rental, I could probably accommodate thirty or forty people. And how ludicrous is that? And how ludicrous could that, would that be for my lovely neighbors who live next to me? It's not what we plan on ever doing. It shouldn't be allowed to ever happen. And I'm concerned that Mystic is going the wrong way, allowing these short-term rentals. So I am, I am opposed to short-term rentals in Mystic, and, and please ask you to return to that fundamental question that really, I think, is the beginning and the end to whether short-term rentals should exist in Mystic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarason. Let's see. Kathy Kafaro spoke already. You were here, right? And Mr. Davis was here, and he spoke as well. So we're onto Mr. McCormick. And is Mr. Matt McCormick online, Madam Clerk?
Is, he is. He should be able to talk now.
Thank you.
Oops, what happened to you, Mayor? Matt? Ooh, I see him.
Mr. McCormick?
Go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Excellent. Mayor, Madam, and council, thank you for your time. My name is Matt McCormick. I own and operate Harborview Landing at eight Casino Road in Mystic, very much for short-term rentals. And I agree and echo many of the things that Bill Ferguson, Paul Beal, and others said in support. And I also agree with Bruce McDermott and some of the things that he stated. I guess the question that I have, you know, I spent millions of dollars fixing up this property, and my property is in a commercial working waterfront district. And the second sentence in this ordinance resides, refers to residential dwellings. And I heard residential neighborhood, residential areas. Many people that oppose this speak to residential property. And I guess for selfish reasons, I want to be sure that the, you know, that the council of the town doesn't go after commercial properties in downtown Mystic, and certainly not my property, which is a working waterfront commercial district. So I just want to make sure there was some clarification at some point as it pertains to commercial properties in town. That's it.
Is that all, Mr. McCormick?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sue Sutherland, I believe, is online, Madam Clerk?
Yes, she's allowed to talk.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, hi, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Sue Sutherland, and I live at thirty-two Neptune Drive in Groton. I am on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the following comments are my own as a resident of the town. After years of studying short-term rentals, the council is moving forward with a wide-reaching ordinance not contemplated in the plan of conservation and development, or allowed, as apparently it is currently operating in the recently revised zoning regulations. When people move to a residential neighborhood and often make a substantial investment to do so, they probably expect it to be, while residential, that it's designed for people to live in a dwelling in a neighborhood, giving a sense of place when neighbors say no. Already, this is not the case for many. Residents from downtown Mystic to Bel Air have spoken of the impact of short-term rentals in their neighborhood, which include an influx of strangers going in and out, then the cleaning service, but always increased traffic and noise. For the reasons above, and especially with four out of the nine current town councils leading the council, I think it would be prudent to defer the ordinance to the next town council to give time for a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, working in concert with the town staff. This will allow for short-term rentals language to be incorporated to the zoning regulations, and, very important, allow for more public input. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. Okay, let me just double-check and make sure that I've got everyone that had signed up.
I think you have, Beth Tillman is here also. Maybe she's not here.
I believe Mr. Brown said the Tillmans were not here for either public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Okay, okay. And I think Mr. Bradham's already spoken. He had an opportunity. I think you're all set.
Mr. Ahmed did not come in?
George Davis?
Yeah, I spoke.
We have Mr. Davis, yes. The only, the only one, Madam Clerk, is Sultan Ahmed.
It's a, is that?
I don't see him.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then we will open it up. If anyone else did not sign up yet, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. And I believe that's Ms. Surf, but I can't see because I'm short. Is that Jen? Yeah, come on up, please. You'll just need to state your name and address for the record again.
I have a really good address, Genevieve, sir. And I'm at six Pearl Street.
Thank you.
Right next door to the now infamous eight Pearl Street, which you've been hearing about tonight. I moved to six Pearl Street about almost two years ago, and I saw this gentleman bought, who bought the house next door. In fact, my landlord introduced me, and he actually showed me the renovations he'd made, a lot, a lot by himself. And I found out a few things about him. I really thought he was moving into the house. A few months later, I see a for-sale sign go by, go, go in front of the house. And I said, gee, that's funny. He just bought it. Why is he selling it already? And a couple of months after that, I see a for-rent sign. The for-rent sign is now in my back alley where he threw it, because he doesn't need to go for rent anymore because it's, it's becoming Airbnb, such as folks on Gravel Street have spoken about. And every weekend now, the driveway, which is quite long, is filled with six or seven cars, young people, and it's exactly six feet outside my bedroom window. And I really don't like it, you know? I moved to Mystic. I was in Groton for years. I moved to Mystic because I wanted a little more action in my life. But I have too much action now. You all are turning, I don't know what you're doing to Mystic. You know, I've lived here in the area for seventy-five years. My mom bought us shoes at Bendets. And you're really ruining it. And you're really ruining it by doing, by doing the things that you're doing. And I, I thought about it today, and also, we had almost no time to think about this. September 14th, the day that you brought it up, was the day that the results were coming in from the primary election. You know, some of us weren't really thinking about short-term rental problems. And today is the day after another big election. Congratulations, by the way, everybody who got, who got back on. But now I'm worried that for the next two years, you're going to keep commercializing Mystic even more. I'm begging you not to do that. Mystic is so precious. Everybody who lives here, even everybody in the town of Groton comes, the people come from all of Groton to come walk down River Road in the morning or ride their bikes. Don't ruin it for us. And I think the problem is this. You have staff, once again, just like the Mystic Oral School, you have staff writing these regulations. Staff does not have a stake in it. I mean, I happen to, I'm pretty sure that Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bronk do not live in the town of Groton. That's the reason we have all the commissions that we have, which have volunteer citizens in the commission, because whoever decided we were going to have commissions to make these decisions, like planning and zoning, thought that people should have a stake in the game. They should have a stake in the community. The decisions that they make should be reflecting the decisions of all the other residents in the community. It's a huge responsibility. And several people from Planning and Zoning, the commission, have come up and said it really is our responsibility to, to either amend our zoning regulations or to consider what is right for the town of Groton. The town of Groton is not a big commercial thing, in spite of what the downtown Mystic vendors would like to tell us. And I love the downtown Mystic vendors, I used to go to their meetings when I was on the town council. I go to their meetings religiously. I want them to do well, but I do not want the whole rest of Mystic to be held hostage to the downtown Mystic merchants. It makes no sense. You cannot take a residential area and turn it into commercial. It's not zone commercial where my house is and where 8 Pearl Street is. How are you assessing these people? I was also, I was in a lot of meetings when I was on the council. I was also joined a meeting with. Commercial assessments are made completely differently than residential assessments. These properties are not assessed as commercial properties. That right away is wrong, right? Or there's something wrong with that. They're not taxed for the thousands and what, you know, the thousands and thousands of dollars in additional income that they're making from this Airbnb. There are so many considerations here. It was really hard to get these documents. I got them at the last minute because I, I was told by someone to come down, there was a public hearing. You know, I really wish you'd take this public hearing as a practice run. As Liam suggested, next time, we should do for selling school properties. Have it just be a practice public hearing, because we need better regs in this. We do not want commercial entities owning our houses in Mystic and turning half, they could probably turn all of Mystic into an Airbnb. I hear that Barcelona, by the way, in Spain, half of the town has been bought by commercial corporate entities who have turned that whole town into Airbnbs. We do not want that to happen. And the way you've written it here, at the very least, by having people from, from commercial corporations be allowed to do this, is absolutely wrong. And I commend Counselor Baumgartner for mentioning that, because I happen to remember.
Your time is up, Ms. Surf.
September 14th meeting, and he mentioned that that was a huge concern to him.
Your time is up, Ms. Surf.
And I do believe that if people are in the house and they rent one or two rooms, fine, okay?
Ms. Surf, your time is up.
A time is up, okay.
Yes.
But please let it go to the Planning and Zoning.
Thank you.
You've got to start over again here. This is absolutely.
Are there any other speakers that would like to address this issue?
I can't believe you've got two more years of this now.
Thank you. Mr. Steever, if you'd come up and state your name and address for the record, please. This is for short-term rentals, correct?
Good evening. My name is Zell Steever, 81 Main Street, Groton. I'm not here to speak either for or against short-term rentals, but I am here to say that I believe the issue before you tonight is one that really appropriately should be considered by the, our town Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I would therefore suggest that you either withdraw this particular ordinance or the proposed ordinance, or delay it until such time as been fully referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration. Because if you don't, I think you're, the town council or the town government is going to have itself a real problem if this becomes an issue of litigation. Because the state statute is pretty clear that land use decision-making is to be done by the Planning and Zoning Commission and not by other bodies. And so I wish you would consider referring this to the Planning and Zoning for an appropriate review. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Steever. Are there any other people here who would like to speak? One more time, anyone else here who'd like to speak on short-term rentals? All right, thank you so much. The hearing then will be closed at 7:50 PM. Thank you, everybody who turned up for that. All right. So, we are on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is a portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table, which I have here at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. Good night, everybody. We're continuing the meeting, so if you could just step outside, that way we can get the other people that have signed up to speak. So far, I have Wanda Tillman and Van Brown. Ms., Madam Clerk?
They're both here. Yep, yep, yep. I have, I have that, the same also, so you're all set.
Thank you. So, Wanda Tillman, please.
Good evening. Yep. This, Van Brown is going to vote first.
Thank you.
You sorry?
Your address.
Oh, hi, this is Van Brown. My address is 925 River Road, Mystic, Town of Groton. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. Congratulations are in order for our re-elected counselors. As we look forward to the new potential senators, I think you can agree to the promises made by the Democratic Party and their platform. Those are economic growth focused on downtown Groton and small businesses, protect our coastline from the impacts of climate change, preserve open space and protect the environment, sensible science-based COVID response, quality human services, including senior services, recreation, and education, community policing, including social workers and community collaboration, and a personal favorite, development that fits Groton neighborhoods. If you would include true transparency, I think you have a winning program. Let's get to work, the townspeople and the town of Groton. Good luck and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Tillman, are you speaking tonight as well?
Yes, I am. Good evening to all of the counselors and Madam Mayor. I am Beth Tillman, 925 River Road, Mystic, in the Town of Groton. I want to congratulate those of you on the council who have been re-elected. And I know it's a little premature, but I would like to welcome those who will be joining in newly to the town council. And mostly, I would like to thank those who are leaving the council. I know you have spent countless hours working on the town of Groton and all of its interests. We haven't always agreed on the best approach to those, but I do believe that your service has been remarkable and, and to the best of your abilities. I would like to open up one topic that I hope will be the first order of business for the new council, and I'd like to get it out on public record tonight, because sometimes these things can get lost and people may not be aware of them. When I went to the town website, I saw that the 31st Town Council rules were listed on that document. I do not actually know if these are from a prior timeframe or if they are the current rules for the town council. So that leads me to the next order, which is E, which limits debate. And there, it clearly states that counselors have five minutes each time they speak. I know that that has not been the case, and it would be nice if the rules could be modified on the website so they reflect current practices of the council. It's very confusing to go there, and actually, there are places where it states that citizens and counselors will have 10 minutes. So there's no uniformity in the way that the information is presented, and it would be extremely nice to be able to have some uniformity that actually reflects what the council is doing. I know that there has been a time or two that counselors have wanted to yield the floor. In F, it specifically indicates that counselors may yield to a non-counselor, and three of those yieldings can occur per meeting with a five-minute limit. Then, Rule 14, I think, has been pushed to the limit several times, especially with social media on the Town of Groton forum. Rule 14 is the conduct of the town council. And it states, no counselor may speak or give the impression that he or she speaks on behalf of the council without prior council authorization to do so. I believe in this election cycle, this has been violated numerous times. And I would hope that the new council incoming has a way to enforce this and that it is clearly stated that a council member cannot engage in these activities. I also would be remiss if I did not mention that for the new council and for the outgoing, because I know that there are a certain amount of information passive between them, that the Mystic Oral School, which appears finally to be on the proper track for disengaging the town from the ill-advised plan of development and the agreement with the town.
You have one minute?
And that will go away and that we will not have to deal with anything like this again. I would hope that Mr. Burt, in his drawing up of the new plan for very transparent RFP process, will certainly find a way to include, as per Andre Baumgartner's suggestion, the oral school property. I realize that it is a state property, but the town has the, has had the ability to influence what the state has offered to the current preferred developer, and I think it is exceedingly important that we have a written process for disposition of that property and the town's involvement in the disposition of that property. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and Godspeed to all of you.
Thank you. You chimed that very well. All right, we have two people in the room that have signed up to speak so far, so Mr. Steever and then Ms. Gauthier.
Zell Steever, 81 Main Street, Groton. Mayor, town manager, clerk, and members of the town council. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you all on the election that was held yesterday. Congratulations on your reelection, for those of you who are, who ran. And the second point is, I'd like to thank this entire council, even those who are on Zoom, for work well-done over the last two years and for all the time and effort that you put in on all these issues. And while I've not always agreed with all of your issues, I've been impressed with the work that you've done on behalf of the entire community. And the third item that I want to very briefly mention, as you would probably expect, and now is Chairman of the Task Force on Resiliency and Sustainability, I'd like to commend you for your efforts to approve the new job description for a resiliency and sustainability manager for the Town of Groton. This is long overdue. I think it comes at a time where this is going to be very important for the future. As you probably know from looking at the press, there are over 100 nations around the world that are beating in Glasgow, Scotland, on this very issue of climate change. And so I think it is in our interest here in this community to continue effectively dealing with climate change, and we believe a manager will be very important. And for all your work in developing this over the last two years has been terrific, and I commend you to that decision tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steever. Lauren Gauthier?
Lauren Gauthier, 31 Fordson Road. Tonight, I'd like to address a discussion by counselors and staff at your October 26th meeting regarding the Pleasant Valley School Development Project and the RFP process. First, I'd like to state that I think the town needs to have a public hearing outreach process prior to retooling the RFP, and of course, prior to issuing it, like Counselor Bordelon repeatedly said. And kind of to illustrate this point, there were several remarks made by Counselor Franco, who mentioned that there is an industrial use perhaps being contemplated. That's something that, that I think the neighborhood needs to know about prior to an RFP being issued and subsequently forbidding in the RFP that gets issued. So that, I mean, if, if there is actually an industrial use that is being considered there, that, that really needs to be brought to the table ahead of time so that the RFP can reflect whether or not the neighborhood would actually accept such a development. And a comment was also made by staff that this property is not good for a park or playground because it's on a well-trafficked road with access to water and sewer. I'd really like to push back against that, specifically because Paquonic Plains Park is also on a very well-trafficked road with access to water and sewer and within stone's throw of three other publicly-owned playgrounds and parks. So the fact that my neighborhood, District 4, which has no public playground or park, should be denied such an amenity because of, it's a more desirable for an apartment complex or industrial use, I think is a little specious of an argument. I believe the town should subdivide the property with a portion dedicated to the park so that we're not relying on the developer to front the money to develop the park and somehow fit it into their plans. I think it's more appropriate that a publicly-owned park or a public-access park be owned by the town, managed by the town, subdivide the lot and allow the RFP to go out for the portion left behind. And then also, that way, you're not trying to use proceeds from the sale to then later find a property, buy the property at market value, and dedicate funds to develop the property. You subdivide it, use the proceeds from the sale to develop what is basically a shovel-ready property as it is, that already has sidewalks connected to the neighborhood, to the property. There is already a playground there, since it is a former elementary school. And just forgive me for being a little suspicious that this promise to eventually find a property, buy it and develop it will happen anytime soon, if ever. And once again, I just reiterate, please reach out and provide opportunity for input and collaboration before reissuing the RFP, even before meeting with the committee again, the selection committee that Mr. Burt Counselors put together. The, the comments that they need to work off of need to come from the neighborhood. It shouldn't come from their own minds, go to the council, then the council has a public hearing. Let us, from the neighborhood, tell you what we'd like to see there, then retool your RFP, and then reissue. It's just a much more publicly-engaged and transparent process. Next, I want to address an agenda item regarding the community outreach specialists. I could be recalling this incorrectly, however, I believe the town police had budgeted two personnel that were not filled yet. They were waiting to find individual officers, individuals to fill those officer positions. I'm not sure if those two positions have since been filled, but I'd like to encourage the council to consider not creating a whole new position within the department and the budget to fill the community outreach specialist role that I understand is mandated by the state, but rather use that personnel budget that's already there for those two unfilled positions and reallocate it to the community outreach specialists.
You have one minute?
Thank you. And also, having the opportunity to speak once a month does not facilitate. And also, having the opportunity to speak once a month does not facilitate robust and timely engagement of town issues and I'd really hope that the next council coming in changes that rule so that folks can actually speak about things in a timely manner. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that has signed up. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak under Citizens' petitions? Ms. Surf?
My name is Joan V. Surf, 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. So great, I get three turns tonight. I didn't want to congratulate you also on your last two terms. And I said it somewhere in my comments on the day, but you, this council has been wonderful on the subject of preserving open space, climate change and social issues, really important issues. And you've done, I think, better than almost any council I can remember on those issues. So I want to thank you for that and thank you for your service, everybody. Now, the one thing that we've had some clashing on obviously is, you know, the commercialization of Mystic. And, you know, that's another thing, Mystic is the only town, except for downtown Groton, I guess, that doesn't have its own zoning commission. City has its own, Groton Long Point has its own and Noink has its own. So we're left out there to hang and at the mercy of the Planning and Zoning Department, not the Commission. And on that subject, I would like you to, if you haven't watched the last few RTM meetings, where one that came up was they were asked to sign off on the sale of the, I think it's the Groton Heights School, without knowing what was going to be done with it. And the RTM really rebelled about that. They really didn't like having to do that. And if you haven't seen that meeting, I really recommend that you go watch it. The other one was giving the ARPA grant funds allocation also to the same Planning and Zoning Department. They really, really rebelled on that one. Which brings me to my fourth point I'm trying to make, which is the rules of the Town Council. I agree with everything Beth Tillman said. The limiting the councilors to a certain amount and certain number of rounds is absolutely ludicrous and embarrassing. The RTM, by the way, has no such time limits on how, and they have a lot more people there and when they get up, and when the RTM gets upset, they can talk for hours and hours. And I've been watching them, they discuss everything and the only thing that can stop them is somebody moves a question and everybody votes for that. That's the way it should be. These rules, I really hope you change them back to the way they were 10 years ago because 10 years ago, people could talk, which was actually the job you have. And the other thing is that you had committees. Committees are really important. In this particular case, in all these cases, if you had a finance committee and a planning committee, planning, if you had a public works committee and a police committee like we used to have in the old days, people could come, anybody could come to those meetings. And it's very useful, actually, I've noticed, because the RTM has all those committees. And a lot of people do go to those committee meetings because that's where you hash out the details. And actually, citizens can sit there and even raise their hands. I've spoken at committee meetings and they've allowed me to. And I've gotten a lot deeper feel for different subjects. If you brought back committees, that would be so great. They were gotten rid of in the days when we had a town manager who didn't like any meetings take place without his presence there and therefore didn't like committee meetings, because that was like a lot too many meetings. And the result is, we really don't have enough details anymore. If we had committees back again, it would be absolutely terrific. I, I just think, going back to our old rules, the way they were, or just take the RTM rules, the RTM rules are perfect. I don't know what happened to the, to the Town Council here, but we need more discussion, we need more private citizens involved. And as I said, the planning and zoning staff should not be making a lot of the decisions that you, you all have farmed out to them. You've got to take those back and give them to commissions that are staffed with residents because residents really will give us the wisdom of the crowds and that's what we want from now on. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens in the room that would like to speak? Okay, very good. I think we'll do the response and then we can take a break after we do the response to Citizens' petitions. I'm going to start. I believe, well, I'm not sure, I haven't looked online to see what rules are posted. We are operating under the 32nd Town Council Rules, which are different than what is posted. Mr. Burt, do you happen to know if the 32nd are posted?
They are. If you go under the Town Council page, but what I can do is clarify, it just says Town Council Rules under the Town Council page, what I could put is, and it does, each one's dated for when they're approved. You know, what we can do is help if someone does a search and catches old things, but if you go to anyone, I could put current Town Council Rules.
That would be great.
Language to it.
Thank you. In addition to that, I just want to note that each new council has the opportunity to write their own rules. This current council kept in practice, or the two councils ago, when we came in in 2017, kept the practice from the prior Republican Majority Council that eliminated the second committee of the whole meeting. So that was done under the prior 2015, 2017, I believe it was, council that eliminated the second meeting of the month and reduced it to one public speaking per month. And we have just kept with that, we didn't change it from then. Again, the rules are made by the council. The next council will have the opportunity to amend the rules, rewrite the rules, any way they so choose. Whatever the council feels is appropriate to manage their meetings is what they vote on. It's not done by one person, there's a rules committee that writes the rules, they bring it back to the full body and the full body votes on it. So there's been full discussion about rule changes. You may not agree with the rule changes, but a majority of the council did and the majority of the council implemented those changes. Let me just see, I think that was all I had regarding the rules. Yes. Are there any other responses to Citizens' petitions? Councillor Overy?
Yeah, I'd just like to, first of all, thank the people that came out tonight. We always learn something when people come and talk with us. There's two things I'd like to respond to if I can. As far as the Groton Heights property, I don't know how anybody could say that they didn't know about it. They're Maha, that bought it, did numerous presentations. They did public presentations at the library next door. They did presentations at the council meetings. I thought it was probably one of the better ones that were being presented. I think the reason that people probably didn't know about it is there was no opposition. The people in the neighborhood were very happy. They thought that what was coming in was going to be good, the building was going to be saved and it was going to be productive and it was going to offer jobs. So I don't know how that didn't become, because there were certainly articles in the paper and, as I say, a lot of different meetings presenting about it. So, you know, I'm sure the next council, of which I will not be part of, can probably do something to get things out a little bit more, but I don't know. I mean, we have the, we have the, you know, everything online. Everything is online. If somebody really wants to know what's going on, all you got to do is go online and you'll find it. The other thing I wanted to mention, as there's been quite a bit of comment about it, is that as Chairman of the Rules Committee, I was asked by the council to bring our meeting together, our group together, and try to come up with something that was going to make it so that our, our meetings were more orderly. We were having a great deal of trouble and that were not going well. So we had the Rules Committee meeting, we discussed times, limitations, et cetera, and we brought it back to the council and the council voted on it. It wasn't any one person, it was the entire council. It was mainly because we were not being able to achieve what we were there to do because our meetings would just break down into arguments. So we did that in an effort to make them better meetings. And I think in a lot of ways, they were. So, as I say, I won't be part of the future for the council, but I think for people like members of the RTM to say that they don't mean know about something, that's on their plate. They should have. And I wish the new council every ability to go forward and do a great job. We have great directors of the different departments. I think overall, Groton runs quite well. And it's only because the people that sit here care about the rest of the town. We're not here to be on, you know, an obstacle in the way of good things for Groton, we're here to try to make them happy and happen. So always remember that the volunteers that are sitting here are just that, volunteers. And thank goodness, we have new people coming in, new ideas, they certainly will probably make changes, but remember, they are volunteers, they're not the enemy. We're here because we care about Groton. I'm not from Groton originally, but I care about it. So for what it's worth, I hope they have an excellent two years and accomplish a lot and I think under the tutelage of our town manager, that will happen. Thank you very much.
Speaking of the town manager, you wanted to speak, Mr. Burt?
I was going to mention, I think probably the item that was likely being mentioned that was before the RTM was probably Pleasant Valley, not Groton Heights, most likely. That had all that discussion with it. So just to clarify.
Thank you.
I believe anyways.
Councillor Baumgartner, did you raise your hand to speak?
Yes, I did. First and foremost, thank you to everyone who spoke tonight with respect to the short-term rental ordinance. I would hope with our future council, when we deliberate on the rules, that we explore the opportunity for the council to provide formal responses to public, the public testimony provided by several residents, especially on a hot topic issue that elicited feedback from both sides. I, just speaking for myself, would have liked the opportunity to clarify some things. It's a very nuanced issue and so certainly would appreciate that feedback, certainly continue sending emails, but would like to have a more in-depth conversation. Last council meeting, we voted to send that, the ordinance to a public hearing, myself and Councillor Bordelain imposed that in large part because we felt that the ordinance did not reflect really the will of the people, if you may. There were a lot of questions and there were a lot of moving parts that we, actually Noink had voted to ban, short-term rentals as a whole. So I think we do have to go back to the drawing board and very concerned with how the written, the ordinance is written as is. But with that said, with respect to the Citizens' petitions, absolutely agree with the new council, hope that we really dive deep into the rules and allow for more public engagement, hearing their concerns. I certainly appreciate the feedback and enhances my ability to be a good councillor. Additionally, with respect to Ms. Gauthier's comments, absolutely agree, we ought to have charrettes, a public hearing before we issue a new RFP, get a sense of what the neighborhood wants to see done with, you know, at the, I'm sorry, Pleasant Valley School, you know, just going door-to-door and meeting folks within District 4. It is abundantly clear, having that recreational space is so important to them and would agree that, you know, to the extent that we can protect all of the playground space and recreational space that exists there in a gre, forested area, we ought to do it. That's a no-brainer. Additionally, agree, you know, and one question I have for Mr. Burt, it was mentioned that there are two openings or vacancies within the Police Department right now. If those positions will not be filled, would it be appropriate for our council to utilize existing that?
No, I'd have to say no. We're desperately trying to fill some spots. We have a ton of overtime that's being utilized, people are feeling burnt out there. We absolutely need to fill those and we do already have a position approved and most of the money in the current budget, but I would not mess with the number of officers. We'd have to, it'd be quite a process and I don't think it would save money, honestly.
Well, if we, if that does continue, I do hope we explore it, especially if we do move into the direction of having a social worker on every shift, which I knew was my goal and certainly the goal of many others on the council. Additionally, I think we covered rules, you know, would agree absolutely, transparency, transparency, transparency. You know, any effort our council can take, can take to speak to the issues in an open and transparent process with the residents, I think enhances our ability to get the job done on behalf of all Groton residents. So thank you again, very humbled to be working with the town for a couple more years. So nothing further. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Franco was next.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking and expressing your concerns and also giving your suggestions. Let me start with Pleasant Valley and Ms. Gauthier. I was not insinuating that there is actually development that wants to come there that is actually commercial. It was a hypothetical of if we received a RFP return and potentially a commercial property, possibly manufacturing went there, would we put a park right next to them? And it was just a hypothetical. And trying to express that maybe the town having an accessible property somewhere else for a park would much, might be better. I'm sorry if I miscommunicated that. I would also like to note that after hearing from the public on numerous occasions and again tonight, the request for changes for the RFP process and the town property, I have also submitted my suggestions by email to Town Manager Burt and it also includes public hearings, additional public hearings for community to officially come out and speak on it. I would also like to state that I had voted against time limits and I argued against time limits. I believe we are elected officials and I think that it has been tried and I don't think it's been successful. And I believe it was only Portia Bordelain, Councilboard Bordelain and myself who had voted against, you know, time limits. I also have made referrals twice to add additional Town Council meetings so that we could proceed more quickly with process and also allow the community to come out and speak. And again, it was Councillor Bordelain and myself who are the only ones that voted in favor of that. So I hear you and I agree with you and I do hope that going forward with the next Town Council, we can open up and have a different type of communication that might be better conducive to doing business with Groton. Thank you.
Councillor Bordelain?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to state thank you for everyone who came out and takes the time to come voice their concerns before the council. As you know, I'm probably the one who, you've heard things like shutter mic off up here, stop talking, you're too loud, interruptions. So I'm, I'm all for being allowed to use your voice and being able to come here and speak. As Councillor Franco had stated, I was against muting councilors. As an elected official, if everyone else can take their mask off, I'm going to, as an elected official, we are, we are elected to be the voice of constituents in our community that may be voiceless or not have a voice or the ability to come before a council and speak publicly because not everybody can do that. Not everybody is as literate as others to be able to have internet access and speak. So this is the place where we have to take that business, the top, is the top priority. And I too have spoken up about having public comment at least twice a month. Limiting, limiting it to once a month does not allow the average worker, and I state worker, to make it here on time after feeding their children and transporting them to and from whatever activity and making the deadline before we had virtual meetings. And I think it makes it very, or seem a little bit confrontational for some because we have waited a whole month with an idea that we finally get to voice publicly and we sat on it. And I think the way that we change that is opening that door up. I also agree that limits on time, councilors is absolutely, has no business in town government, that's what we were meant to be here for, and I did vote that down as well. If you want to change and shorten the meetings of some, instead they want to leave at 10 o'clock, I have to go. Well, we are elected to do a job and we are volunteers and you volunteered to give up that time to be up here. The way we change that, I can agree with Councillor Franco, and we, we, the agenda packets and the meetings are too big. We're cramming a ton of information in a short amount of time. Sit up here and do it. It's not easy. 10 o'clock comes, I've been up since 5 o'clock, most of you members, as Councillor Overy stated tonight, we're all volunteers. We all have full-time jobs on top of us. So yes, it gets a little bit tough up here, but the way we do that is not cram three meetings a month. a month with a huge agenda. What we do is we break it out. I do think committees might be an option where we can have small breakout groups where some of the stuff can be worked out, where there can be dialogue for the community to come before us tonight, like tonight, short-term rentals. There's not an option to say, like, I have questions. Like, a lot of things that I heard tonight were corporate-owned versus privately-owned. Or how about people who own property that could only live a block away? That kind of is a, you know, neighborly kind of a connection. And I think we do need to allow for that type of communication and transparency to happen and allow folks to be able to have a question-and-answers dialogue. I seen a meeting in Westerly done very actually, very nicely, where they allowed for not just the public comment, one thing to come up here and speak and say everything that somebody wants, and we all just sit here and respond to councilors' comments. It's another to open that up a next level and have dialogue where we can then respond to, you know, the, you know, folks that spoke tonight and in a real live time action. So, a person can speak and a counselor can respond and ask questions in a timely manner that's representative to what they're asking. So, I too hope moving forward that we're able to do such things. And I've heard the concerns, and I'm all for transparency, and I agree that there's some changes that need to be made, and that's why I am excited to be coming back to be part of that change and making sure that we do not run this meeting with stopwatches and time limits and really putting pressure on people and saying, you have one minute versus you're getting close to, and allowing people to run a little over because I'm doing government work. When it's in the midst of a budget session and they allow you to only speak twice, how am I representing my community when I'm only allowed to speak twice on a budget item? But what if another counselor says something that I want to respond to? So, I'm excited for change. I encourage you guys to keep coming and speaking, and I hope with the next council up here that we can, you know, make the change that's good for Groton because at the end of the day, we're the voice of the community, and that's the most important thing that any individual can have. And I do believe the planning and zoning agreements need to come before this council. When we start talking about Pleasant Valley, we're like, oh, okay, we got a consensus on four items. No, that's not good government. Good government is having an actual meeting where we break it all apart and rewrite that RFP and develop agreement before we start picking it apart because we have a development, a developer in mind now. So, I look forward to making some change around here, and I'm excited for the new change that's going to come down. And I heard your concerns, and I will continue to do my work. Thank you for coming out.
I have Councilor Melendez, Parker, Zepari, and Heed, if any of you would like to speak? No? Okay. Again, keep in mind, the rules are voted by the whole council, not by one person. An overwhelming majority approved the last rules, and good luck to the new council with creating the new rules and running your meters, meetings in the manner that you feel is appropriate to best serve the community. All right. At that point, it is now 8:28, and we'll take a five-minute break. 8:28, come back for 8:33, please. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
All right. It's 8:35, and we are back from our recess. And we are on to Roman numeral seven, consent calendar. Councilor Parker?
I make the resolution, accepting the town council meeting minutes of October 5th, and the acceptance of the special trust funds are hereby accepted and approved. Is it moved?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner for acceptance of the consent calendar. I have a couple of things that we need to address. First of all, pages 12 through 14, I believe, in the minutes, there's an error in the voting boxes. Council Overy's vote is not included. She was here up until, I believe, like 9:06, if I'm not mistaken. So, Council Overy was here for the votes on pages 12 through 14, and then left the meeting at 9:06, as you have noted on page 15. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is a more, more important or weighty matter. Page 19 of the packet, this is in reference to the extension of the appropriation for the Groton 2020 school facilities plan. The resolution that passed that evening was in error. The minutes need to reflect that it was in error. I like that there is a-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I cannot-
Excuse me. No, let me finish, please. Let me finish, please.
Well, I can't repair something that-
Thank you. So, the, the note that's inserted here, that says, may be noted that the town council special meeting, I like that. I think that needs to stay there. But the 184.5 is not correct. That's not what we voted that evening. We had a later meeting where we made that correction. So, the view that I have in that, I believe is correct parliamentary procedure, is the minutes have to reflect what happened at the meeting, and the meeting was voted 184 million flat. So, these minutes from October 5th should reflect the 184 even. The minutes from the later meeting where it was corrected will reflect the correction. There should be a trail, though, as the clerk has done here, with the bold type note. That way, in the future, if someone is doing the legislative trail on this, they can very easily find it. So, this needs to be corrected back to what actually happened at the October 5th meeting, which is to change the 184.5 to straight 184. Madam Clerk?
I'm following what the county, the county attorney asked me to do, so I will, I will defer to her with your comments. But, you know, that's, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yes.
I totally agree with you. But, you know, we'll make, we'll make it the way, the way it should be. Don't worry.
Okay. Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything?
Just add, that was originally the bond council's recommendation I brought up. I did not believe that was the proper procedure. She looked at it and agreed, and that's why we did the correction resolution.
Right. So, we have the corrected resolution that was passed at the later meeting, which does have the 184.5 in it. So, I, I, my view is that this needs to be adjusted to reflect what actually happened at the meeting. Councilor Parker, did you have something else?
Yes. On page 15 of our packet, which was page six of the Tuesday, October 5th meeting, under, right after Council Overy left, Councilor Melendez was speaking about Children First Garden. Can we spell, please spell Susan Corrie's last name right, it's C-O-R-R-I-C-E.
Oh, Corrie's, okay.
Corrie's, not Sharice.
What time did you have me leaving?
I have to send that to you because I can't hear you.
Oh, C-O-R-R-I-C-E.
9:06, Council Overy, is what I had written in my notes.
I was here. I, I, going through these things, I voted on it.
I had you at-
I might have gone out, but I came back in.
Overy left at 9:06, is what I had written down.
No.
Okay. So, Council Overy would like you to check the time when she left the meeting as well.
Thank you.
I had, I had noted the same time that is in the minutes, so I'm not quite sure. Any other corrections to the minutes? Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, on page, I'm sorry, on page 4, 23, or page 14, but page 23 in the agenda packet, it states, so the resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding the adoption of ordinance to regulate STRO.
I can't hear you.
A correction on page 23 for a resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding the adoption of an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. The second-
Are you mumbling? I have only heard page 23, resolution.
Yes.
Please speak, pull your mask down and walk into the microphone.
So, the second paragraph where it states, okay, I'm sorry, the first paragraph, so Councilor Bordelon's, I'm sorry, Councilor Baumgartner stated that he would not be supporting this motion citing federal concerns, including the definition of a property owner. He stated his concerns with the commercial entities purchasing properties for sure-term rental purposes for breaking up neighborhoods, so that should be breaking.
We're on consent calendar. Okay, thank you.
And that's all.
Councilor Baumgartner was just giving the correction.
I'm really unsure where you're at.
This is page 23.
Well, your page is different than mine. I'm-
So, page, page 14.
Roman numeral 10.9, item 2020419, introduction of ordinance to regulate short-term rentals and set public hearing. The first full paragraph that begins, Councilor Baumgartner? Is that correct, Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes.
And what is the error, sir?
It should be breaking.
Where?
In the first paragraph.
Oh, okay. There's a spelling error. Second sentence, there's a spelling error on the word breaking.
Thank you.
Was that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So, we will vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar with the corrections, yes. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Franco, that is moved. Communications and reports. Town councilors, Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes. First and foremost, thank you to everyone, irrespective of how you voted, for exercising your civic duty and participating in your local elections yesterday. It was very great to see some familiar faces, some new faces at the polls, and very humbled to have been re-elected last night and look forward to serving with many of these outstanding councilors with us, as well as some newcomers. I know Bruce Jones was in the crowd this evening, Melinda Cassieri, David McBride, Scott Westerveld, and, I hope I'm not forgetting anyone. But, in, big thank you in, to Councilor Overy, Mayor Granatonski, Councilor Heed, and Councilor Zepari for your service. I don't have plenty of time to talk more about it in a couple more meetings, but, you know, look forward to working with you and rolling up our sleeves to work on behalf of our great residents we serve. Thank you.
Councilor Parker, communications?
I just want to report out that I did send everyone the liaison report from TVCCA as I was attending that meeting before the 26th, on the 26th. So, I wanted to make sure that got out to everyone. I did report out that the, I don't remember if I did, but I'm going to anyways. The negotiations meetings have been completed, and we're awaiting response back. Let's see. What else? I can't remember what else I've done, and I know we've received many communications. Thank you to everyone for coming out and voting. It was a nice turnout and got a chance to see a lot of- It was a nice turnout and got a chance to see a lot of people. It was a nice day, cold, but nice day. And looking forward to working and moving Groton forward and maintaining what we can and building up what we need to build up. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco, communications?
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to second what you both said. I thought that summed it up very nicely. So, thank you.
Counselor Heed, communications?
I have nothing to report, but I'll congratulate the winners of the election for town council, board of ed, and RTM, and also offer to those who ran but did not win that there are plenty of boards and commissions where we could really use your help. So take a look at the town website or contact either John Scott for the Republicans or me at the Democrats, and we can get you hooked up with something that you may find interesting and where you can help out the town. All right? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Overy, communications?
Nothing this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon, communications?
Thank you. It's pretty much already been stated about the election. Just thanking everybody for coming out. I think it was a great turnout and appreciate, you know, the folks doing what's right for the community. So looking forward to working with the next oncoming councillors and wishing the folks who are moving on or, you know, returning to government in a different form, the best successes on their future endeavors. Again, attended marching band, of course, competition for Fitch. So they had their states that was held in, I believe it was, where was I? Either Rocky Hill. We've been so many places. Rocky Hill this past Monday, because they got rained out on Saturday. It was a great turnout. Fitch came in fourth. They did an amazing job. I think the team should be proud, coming from, you know, losing their marching band coach and a new, amazing coach coming in and taking over and creating something within a matter of weeks before they had marching band camp. So it was a great turnout, a lot of fun. And this Saturday, they'll be going to Nationals in Pennsylvania. I'm excited to go, and it'll be a day trip down and a day trip back. So hopefully, they'll get to see some different arrangements because they'll have a chance to see schools and performances that they haven't seen. And part of it is just the experience for the students going. It's not a win or lose. It's about seeing collaboration and being engulfed in the arts and seeing other designs and other communities, what they bring forward. So really excited for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just echo what others said. Thanks for all those who ran for election, those who came out to vote, the registrar voters, and the town clerk's office for a well-run election. Thank you.
Oh, I have one on the-
Thank you.
I forgot, Madam Mayor.
Counselors in Perry?
I'm sorry.
I too would like to congratulate all the winners in yesterday's election and just say that it's been a pleasure to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon, did you need to add something else?
Yeah, there was a communication. At the polls, there is a concern, and I think moving forward to the next election, which would be in about a year, is our polling stations. We really need to address the accessibility for all. Fitch High School, there was a lot of concerns. I see people almost looked like they were going to tumble over at times because it's quite a long walk from the handicap parking to go up and around into the front of the building. There is a staircase there, but not everybody could use the staircase. Folks were offered the right to have a ballot, someone come out and bring them a ballot. But some, it's their dignity and their pride, and that right to use their own weight and walk in that door and fill out their ballot like everybody else. Some people want to do that, and they should be able to. And I have heard it every time I stand at District 7's polling station, the concern of trying to get into that building, and some, Mary Morrison is another one. So I just, if we could look at ways to make sure we have some new buildings online now. So when we start looking at that, maybe the town annex. But looking at ways that we can make sure accessibility is an option and it's truly accessible, and it's one thing to say, oh, there's a ramp. But how far do people, people who have COPD and had oxygen tanks going in, I mean, they were having to stop. I mean, it was just, it was quite an ordeal. So I just wonder if, as a town, John, we can look at that, those polling stations when we allow, you know, the town to use certain buildings where there might be some more handicap accessible, accessibility for our voters.
We can certainly, you know, discuss with the registrars.
Thank you.
All right. I attended the Gulf Advisory Board meeting on Monday evening, and they had their normal revenue reports. And Mr. Berry was in conference with the other members discussing the purchases made online and possibly finding a way to amend the monthly reports to roll over the funds that come in after Director Landry and her department has audited everything out, and to have amended reports. It would work out to be probably a month later so that they could get a truer picture of the revenue, including the point of sale as well as the online purchases. Mr. Berry and, in conjunction with Mr. Morrison and Mr. Goodhue are going through the CIP list, and it's many of the same things that we've already voted. And they're trying to figure out which ones, you know, to move forward and which order to move forward. So they are looking at that already, which is great because they'll be ready then to come to the manager and the staff meetings when Mr. Burt is looking for the CIPs. There is an unusual circumstance for those who have served on the RTM, knowing that there is money, fund balance now, that the golf course has, which was never something that we used to have. So hats off to Mr. Morrison, Mr. Goodhue, Mr. Berry, and the manager for seizing the opportunity with the pandemic and making the golf course so much more profitable, having that outlet for the community to have as a recreational resource. And they've really been able to keep those customers that came in during the pandemic times, and it has benefited because they've been able to accrue some savings there. So they're looking at how they may use those savings to help out with improvements that are needed on the course itself. And they're looking for us, Council RTM, to fund the public buildings in order to make the necessary repairs to the bathrooms and to the, you know, abatement of materials in the crawl space and those sorts of things. So I've enjoyed very much serving on the Gulf Advisory Board, and I hope the next person in from the council enjoys it as much. If nothing else, you'll get to hang out with Mr. Wells and listen to his reports. Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Keep doing that, Madam Mayor.
That's okay.
Okay. The RTM will be meeting next week, the ninth. And they do have a special education meeting tomorrow. And I believe that the Community Development and Services Committee is trying to get one together also. The education committee is going to be reviewing what's going on with the transportation for schools, and if there's any help that the RTM can give. I think it's just a matter of relaying information probably from one group to another. The more groups, more people that understand what's going on and the remedy is, the better, I suppose. And the Community Development and Services Committee has been developing a flyer to advertise the positions for students to serve as a liaison sort of title on the RTM to keep the RTM abreast of school business. So they're just finalizing that document. And they have one piece of business that they didn't finish last month because they ran out of a quorum. Talk about a late meeting. At 11:15, we lost our quorum. Oh, surprise. And that wasn't a big meeting. All right, that's it. And I'll go on to the clerk of the council.
Thank you.
And just finalizing the results of the election. Everyone's aware of the winners. There will not be a recount on any seat. There was a question on Fifth District RTM, but Representative Wells relinquished his right for recount. He lost by three votes. It's unusual for a recount to make up any votes. So I believe we're going to see Mr. Wells opt into a position when one comes available in that district. There we go. I was speaking of people who have, candidates that won more than one seat. You have to determine which seat you would like to serve on, and on later resignation, preferably sometime after the 7th of December or thereabouts, even before. It'd be great.
Thank you. Town manager, communications?
Any questions?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Mr. Burt, one moment, please. Counselor Franco, question?
Can you tell us what the turnout was in yesterday's election?
The turnout? I don't have the percentage, the turnout depth, which I did. Our system wasn't turning that information, and we don't have it yet today. So hopefully, I'll have it out tomorrow by the registrars. Maybe tonight, if I, after this meeting, go into that system. But it was a low turnout, considerably lower than most of our elections.
Thank you. Mr. Burt?
Sure. One, I may have misheard, but the RTM meeting's the 10th. I thought I might have heard 9th, but it is the 10th. HR, the interviews for HR, the Human Resources Director position, the first round was today, and I intend to do the next round pretty quick here. I'll keep you updated. A few public works things. They're underway in paving Flanders Road, and they were very good about working around elections yesterday. Water Taxi Dock, which was supposed to be completed in April of '22, has been pushed back a little bit to Memorial Day due to supply issues, which is not, you know, surprising. They've also been working with the beautification committee to clear out and pretty up the Avery Memorial there, so they've been doing a lot of work there. And they do continue every week going in, you know, that's become, that area's a shopping cart drop-off point. And so, you know, please, people, if you're watching, don't drop shopping carts off outside of the stores. But they have been relocating them back to the proper stores. The Navy reached out, and you may remember this came up a year, probably two years ago. There's some talk of Crystal Lake Avenue maybe having a name change or an honorary name. That's come back up again. I'm going to meet with, they're looking at an honorary name. No name picked out. They want to do a process of public input, so it'll be quite a process. But ultimately, it's the Planning and Zoning Commission that does have to make that approval. So, but I'll meet with them and explain the process to them. Groton Community Meals are planning on starting back up again at Senior Center in January. My understanding, though, is they want to start off slow, just do people picking up meals. They don't want to have them inside yet, so that's their latest plan. And then Health Department, the City of New London, City of Groton, and me will be meeting Monday to talk about the mask mandate. Things are going well. I'm hoping this will be gone pretty quick here, because things are going well. I'll let you know as soon as I know something, and, you know, hopefully, I can give the new council a gift of no masks. So I'll let you know as soon as I know anything. Obviously, we'll get the word out whatever happens. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I see Mr. Hanover's here. Is he here for a department report?
For the River Road.
Thank you. All right. We're on to committee reports. I don't have anything from committee of the whole.
Madam Mayor?
Excuse me?
I think, I don't know if Counselor Franco was up. I had a question for the manager as well.
Sure.
I was curious as to, is there any update on when the robotics team will be moving into Mary Morrison from Pleasant Valley?
I haven't heard anything lately. I know they're, I think they're waiting to have the election. Do you remember? Have you heard anything?
They were in the midst of competitions, I think, too.
I'll have to check on it. I'll get back to the council.
Right. I do know they were just recently, yeah, they were recently in California, but I was just curious if there was any updates on that. And then I'm hearing the school budget, school building budget is coming in with significant savings, and do you know how that will be moving forward with the savings and how it will be decided, if it will be spent, or?
I've not heard. However, we are going to have the superintendent at our meeting next week because they have to, she's going to give an update on their collective bargaining agreement that they've settled on. So she will be here to answer questions next week. I will, though, flag to her that question in advance.
Right, because I believe if there's significant money left over, it's something that has to go through the bonding agency, what happens to them?
Okay. I was thinking more budget, yeah. We should have a report. Of course, the, you know, middle school's pretty much wrapped up. The elementary still have, you know, we're still hitting the end. So really, what we should do, I'll get a report from Rick Norris on where we're at to see what we want to do with anything. There'll be a few million left for the middle school. And actually, maybe, Bert, do you have any information on that? I think there's a few million left on that, and maybe a million, million and a half fish on each elementary, last I heard. Do you know anything further than that? Is it? No? Okay. All right. We'll get some numbers to everything.
Yeah, I just had heard it. It might be somewhere in the close vicinity to $5 million. So I was just wondering what was going to happen with that and how soon this will all play out.
So I'll get the information, too.
Does someone else have a question for Mr. Burt? Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. I was just checking to see if, you know, when you have the update, is when we can tour the TVCCA buildings?
I'll get with her and guess a couple dates from her that can work out.
Okay. And with budget season obviously not that far away, as crazy as it sounds, it would be good to start to be able to do tours of buildings to see, like, what the needs are in our town buildings and, you know, just tours in areas of concern, you know, possible proposed CIPs as those start to come out so that we can get out and start looking at, you know, the infrastructure and the concerns in our town buildings to, you know, see what the greater need is at some point. So just some tours. I know in the past, there was something at the water treatment facility and things like that, so I think it's really helpful to kind of get out there and see what the need is.
That's a good timing, all around with some turnover.
Thank you.
All right. On to nine, committee reports. I have nothing from committee of the whole. Counselor, Chairman Melendez, anything for personnel appointments?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Rules, Chairman Overy?
No report.
Counselor Baumgartner?
No report.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, council, I think I'm at the right point. It's 9:01.
Pardon me. Pardon me. Before you get into something, I wanted to give you those percentages if you want them.
Sure.
It's an overall 25%, ranging from 16 from First District, 26 Second District, 20 Third District, 15 Fourth, 27 is Fifth, 36 Sixth, 38 Seventh, for a total of 23. I don't know why they get 25, but it's 23% turnout.
Thank you very much.
23% turnout.
Very good. Thank you. So at this point on our agenda, the town council meeting is going to recess. It's 9:02, and we are going into a very brief committee of the whole meeting. You had the special packet to go with it. So I'm going to call to order the special, town council committee, the whole special meeting agenda. It is 9:02. All councillors are present. And the new business is 2021-6553, River Road Tree Removal. This is page two. I believe we are on Counselor Franco.
Sure. Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the Public Works Department remove two street trees on town property, town-owned property in front of House Number 151, River Road.
Second, Parker. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. This is the item we just had the public hearing on. We've discussed this prior. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Hanover? He is here for us. Counselor Bordelon?
I know it was discussed, and, you know, we are removing the trees, and maybe it's not the best to put trees there. But I know prior to the beautification, there wasn't a lot of funds and things, and we are basically, anything dies, we dig the hole and we leave it, as we were told in Berry, and not replant or do anything. So once these trees are removed, what will the landscape look like in that immediate area? Is there a need or a sense? It doesn't have to be one of those large trees, but maybe a low-lying tree that's maybe a flowering tree or something to kind of take the place of that area? Or what will that look like?
Sure. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. The area in front of 151 is, these two trees are kind of on a ledge, which is probably what's kind of leading to their decline and their health. Just immediately north is the Peace Sanctuary. So there's a large number of trees there. You know, we could put some more trees to replace these, maybe in a different location, but I wouldn't recommend, you know, right where these are coming down.
Okay. And then my last question. So when I went out there looking at the land there, how is that all going to be covered up? So the trees will be removed? Are we going to grass the area, maybe put some shrubs in? Like, how is it going to, like, you know, make the curbside appeal look?
It's really just, it's a natural area now. There's no lawn area there. So we just, we grind up the stumps once we remove the trees and just let nature kind of take over in that area. I think that, you know, the homeowner may have some gardens right behind there. He may, you know, do something with it, but, you know, we wouldn't put grass in there, per se.
Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, just on that topic, I know River Road has come up quite a bit during my time on the council, just for-
Is your mic going?
I don't think so.
Unless I'm quiet tonight.
Talk louder.
I'll talk louder.
Just quickly, you know, River Road has come up quite a bit in my time on the council, just residents talking about improving pedestrian cycling safety, and certainly on the resiliency perspective. And so, you know, and Councilor Bordelon has pretty made it abundantly clear she'd like to at least maintain the same level of trees we have in the future. And so if we can explore maybe a new area for trees, that'd be great. But I think it'd be great to, you know, moving forward, have a long-term plan or discussion about the future of River Road, especially considering it is a scenic road and a road that is heavily frequented by residents, you know, walking and biking on the weekends, and we should really showcase it. So obviously, that's not on the agenda tonight, but, you know, hope we can deliberate on that in the future. But, you know, thank you for, for your work on this.
Thank you.
All right, we will vote on 2021-655, River Road Tree Removal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. This takes us to item 2020-4111, Short-Term Rental Ordinance. I'm gonna start off on this. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. The purpose of having this, in my view, the purpose of having this on the agenda was to do just what we did tonight, was to get the public input and to open it up for everybody, so that this council could hear what was going on. My recommendation, my intention, is to leave this on the COW agenda for the next council to come back to. If, we don't have to do anything with it, we can just leave it sitting. And then, when the next council is seated, then that body may choose what they want to do with it. So that was my recommendation at this point. I'm not sure how the rest of you feel, but I'm gonna go to Mr. Burt next, because he had something he wanted to share as well.
Just to say, I concur, because most questions that are gonna be asked are gonna involve the town attorney, for instance, their opinion that it isn't allowed use currently. So it's the, you know, most things you're gonna get into is not things staff are gonna be able to answer. So not without their input anyways. So I ask that we hold off.
Councilor Bordelon, did you wish to speak on this?
Yeah, I agree. I think that's pretty fair. I think some more research needs to be done. Even things that I heard tonight was owner occupied versus corporately owned, and folks that are renting places that they live in or live near versus corporate, you know, entities coming in. So I do think there needs to be some more discussions about where this lies with planning and zoning. I also heard that tonight. People would like planning and zoning more involved at an earlier phase in this, and I think it would be good to make sure that we have a meeting with them, and maybe even have some questions geared towards them that, you know, were brought up tonight about directly addressing the zoning and how this would affect and what is currently written. So I do think it would be appropriate, and the town attorney needs to be there as well. So I think at this time, there's not much we can do. So, and I think it should move to, John, will this, how will you incorporate planning and zoning per the requests tonight?
I think the council needs to have a bit of a discussion, get some background and some questions answered, and then the council can decide how they want their interplay with them to be.
Sorry. So, I mean, I think it would be, no matter what council comes in, I mean, it seems pretty evident to me that planning and zoning should be involved in this process, and that should be the recommendation coming from our town staff. That's what I'm, you know, we're looking, I'm looking for direction from the town staff as to having planning and zoning involved in this. And I, to me, it sounds like they should be, and I'm just asking.
And I disagree with that. It was a decision of the council early on. As you recall, the attorney had laid out, if you do it via ordinance, via zoning, that anything that exists right now will be grandfathered and will not be regulated by the new regulations. Whereas if you do it by town council ordinance, and I think part of what led the council to that was all the information gathered from that committee that was formed, that looked at what other towns were doing, and it was leaning towards a townwide ordinance. So I think you need to, and talk first, and then figure out what you want their role to be.
I guess I understand that from that perspective, but I think it's still important to bring them in to speak about it from a planning and zoning perspective, if that was an option of what we were gonna go down. The choice not to go that way or not, I think they should still be brought in, so that the discussion is talked about how it fits into the current regulations versus an ordinance versus, I think we should, instead of narrowing it out, I think it's important to bring the attorney and planning and zoning, so that we have both on the table, and it's fully kind of vetted in its entirety. Thank you.
Councilor Franco?
Thank you. I also recall there was an issue regarding us taking up the topic as an ordinance versus the planning and zoning regulations. But I had written a note here, and one of my questions, as I recall, there are issues with planning and zoning and the council not having any undue influence over them. So if this was something that we were going to send to them in the future to actually, or if they were going to take the topic up, if we brought them into our meeting and had discussions about this whole thing, we could possibly influence what they would do in the future. Is that correct? Because I was told the town council cannot influence planning and zoning.
Well, I think it depends. I mean, we often send things to them, sometimes legally required to get their input. There's certainly a way for them to be involved. We just, you know, bring the town attorney in and look at what the proper process is. But I do definitely agree.
So we can have, so, let me just clarify. So we can have meetings with town council and planning and zoning together?
I would want, I would think, depending, it depends on the item, because I think there's a difference in John Vreiner, please, up at any point. But let's say you have an official action you're gonna take with a developer, where they have submitted an application. That might be one thing. There might be some nuances there. But I'd want to talk to the attorney about that and not answer myself. So I think there could be some nuances there.
That is something that I think we should check into, because, and I have plenty of questions, that I think this should just go to the council, I mean, to stay in the COW, and then continue the discussion, and have more information to follow up regarding if we meet with planning and zoning, or if they would take this up on their own.
If interested, I can ask the attorney if he sees it appropriate to invite, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole Planning and Zoning Commission, could be some representatives at first, just for the next meeting. But, you know, I'll talk to the attorney and just see what's appropriate, make sure there's no issues.
And because also, if they're discussing it here, and then they're going to make decisions there, I mean, my question also is, can planning and zoning take this up without direction from the council? This is something that's under their purview anyway, that they could have just taken this up on their own without our direction. Is that correct?
Correct. And I know early on, they were told the council's looking at it, but that's probably been a year now. But, yeah, they could take up the zoning part. Then we'd have to look at how the two, you know, if you did something and they did something, how that interplay would be. I will tell you that if you do something and no one has their own zoning, it won't override, like, knowing zoning. So, you know, we'd have to look at all that. So there's a lot of questions.
All right. I'm, I'm.
But I'll take what the council says so far and start running things by the attorney and just see what the appropriate process is.
Okay, well, I'm in favor of leaving it in the COW at the moment. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Part of my opposition to, for advancing the proposed ordinance to the, to a public hearing was that I was afraid we would lose the ability to have further deliberations in COW and further refine it. Now that that has been clarified, I am far more at ease, you know, knowing that it will be going, I'm far more at ease knowing that it will be, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. It'll be more at ease knowing that we will be going back to COW to further deliberate on these matters. Again, this is not a new discussion item. Much credit to the mayor for starting a task force with the council's consent now, well over a year, I think maybe a year and a half, two years ago.
Two years.
Really kicking off these discussions and engaging not just our, you know, our town folks, but also our subdivisions, the City of Groton, knowing, and Groton Long Point, bringing those stakeholders and getting some of those conversations going. Many of those individuals were in the room this evening to testify on this ordinance, many in support, others in opposition. But I think that's a healthy dialogue. We need to continue this dialogue, really differentiating, you know, as was mentioned in STRO, a commercial entity as opposed to a, you know, a rooming house, or, you know, an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, or a, you know, somebody renting out their home for the weekend. You know, I think those are very different uses. With that said, if we are moving in the direction of an ordinance as opposed to doing regulation, we really do have to engage the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, which really means we gotta get the lawyers in the room ASAP to, you know, so that we don't run afoul with any laws in the future and expose ourselves to litigation, because this is something that does inevitably impact somebody's pockets. And so with that said, you know, getting those, you know, planning and zoning in the room and engaging them in, not necessarily in the same room at the same time, but ensuring that they have the opportunity to lend their voice to this issue, and even, you know, having a better understanding if, you know, really they ought to be moving forward with their own regulation, or there could be an ordinance that augments that. So, but I think we are a lot further than where we started, and, you know, really happy to see that this has developed in the way that it has. And I think much of that is due to, I think, great public input. So I respect that we did have the opportunity to engage citizens tonight, and I hope to continue that dialogue and continue discussions in the COW. But certainly, the folks who are a part of the council now, doesn't mean that you can't lend your voice to those discussions as private citizens either. Thank you.
Don't worry about that. Okay, so then, this item will just be left on the open agenda items list for the next council to pick up as they so choose. All right, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the COW.
So moved.
Seconded by Baumgartner, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjourned the COW, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors at 9:17. So the COW is adjourned. So now we're going back to the council meeting under new business. This is 2021-655-4, River Road Tree Removal. The resolution is on page 30. Councilor Overy, page 30 in your packet, please.
Do you want the whole thing, or just the end?
The whole thing, a resolution approving the removal of two street trees. Page 30.
Oh, I'm a page off, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Resolution approving the removal of two trees on River Road as scenic road. Whereas on September 5th.
Can you move the mic closer? I don't know that they can hear you. Thank you.
Can I sing now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Whereas on September 5th, 1989, by resolution, the town council designated River Road as a scenic road according to Town Ordinance Section 13.5-121 to 13.5-124N. Whereas on August 24th, 2021, a Connecticut licensed abortion.
Arborist.
Thank you. Reviewed two street trees in front of a house at Number 151 River Road, and determined that they are in poor health and recommended their removal. And whereas the town council had a public hearing on the proposed removal of two street trees on River Road on November 3rd, 2021, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the Public Works Department to remove the two trees on town-owned property in front of House Number 151 River Road. Iso move.
Second, Bordelon?
Moved by Overy and seconded by Bordelon. And this is the item that we just discussed. All right, all those in favor, 2021-655, River Road Tree Removal Resolution. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2021-1161, King Property renaming Sasakus Nature Preserve, page 31. Councilor Bordelon?
I make a resolution changing the name of the King Property. Whereas the property at 500 Pequot Road, known as the King Property, and whereas the Mashtucket Pequot Tribal Nation recommended renaming the property to Sasakus after the Pequot Grand Stadium, and whereas the Groton Conservation Advocates recommended identifying the property as a nature preserve due to the unique nature, to, due to the unique nature features, now let it be resolved that the town council approves the renaming of the King Property to Sasakus Nature Preserve. Iso move.
Second.
Moved by Bordelon, seconded by Baumgartner. That's 500 Pequonic Road. We had a discussion in a prior meeting. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2021-7251, Sustainability and Resilience Manager Job Description. This is page 32. Councilor Melendez, please.
I make a motion recommending a resolution authorizing creation of a job description for the Sustainability and Resilience Manager position in the Office of Planning and Development Services. Whereas the town council created a position in the FYE 22 budget for a Sustainability and Resilience Manager in the Office of Planning and Development Services. And whereas the creation of said position will allow the town to plan for future climate sustainability and resiliency for Groton. And whereas the job description as proposed will be for a new full-time position that was approved for starting in FYE 2022. And whereas this proposed job description will better serve the goals and mission of the Town of Groton and the Department of Planning and Development Services. And now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the above referenced job description. So moved.
Second, Bordelon?
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Bordelon. Councilor Bordelon?
Thanks. I just wanted to say that at the beginning of all this, when I first joined the council, you know, looking at, from advocating for leadwater in our schools, about, you know, making sure that we clean that up, to looking at different ways to be more sustainable in our community, I've been a strong advocate for making sure that we were doing and moving in that fashion in our town. And so this is a no-brainer for me, and I think it's really important. I think it's important for our town to have somebody that's able to work towards understanding and helping our department heads work as things start to change in our community, that we're seeing already. I mean, small changes like increased groundwater, this past summer has been extremely rainy. I know, really, people are seeing flooding in basements that never saw flooding in basements before, and water tables are higher than they were. So things like that, that, you know, right now are affecting us, as well as looking at planning long-term. I'm excited and hoping that we also look at the Pequonic Bridge area. Some say that that's not in the flood zone, others think it would not directly be impacted, but I do think there's a concern over there. When we're looking at sustainability and resources in our community, I hope it looks at all sectors of town, from the highest-end homes on the, you know, the greater side of town, to all areas, and looking at ways to make sure we're looking at sustainable resiliency, and also looking at contamination things as well in, with this. So this is a great thing to have, and I'm really excited to move forward with this and look at this as a public health need. So, thank you.
If I might.
Councilor Overy, and then Baumgartner?
I just wanted to thank the committee that has worked so hard on this, diligently guiding us towards recognizing the fact that we do need this person. I have been very impressed by your committee, and I thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. Councilor Baumgartner?
I align my remarks with Councilor Bordelon and Councilor Overy. I have a question for Manager Burt. How soon can, do you expect us, the town, to hire for this open position?
Of course, Planned Pharma will kind of take the lead on that with HR, and we're hitting the holidays, so it's probably gonna, you know, be into, you know, slightly into the new year. But I would like to get something as soon as possible, obviously. It'll be a priority.
Excellent. And as I stated before, there are no shortage of issues for that individual to work on. So I'm very much looking forward to supporting this job description this evening.
I have one further question, Madam Mayor.
I'm gonna take my.
I was just letting you know, just like, because you were looking at.
So I just want to also thank the council for being forward-looking as far as addressing climate and resilience issues. We've been in this boat for a long time, and it's well past when we should be taking further concrete steps to start changing things in the town. Thank the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force volunteers who have done a stellar job in enlightening us and in trying to progress all the actions that. job in enlightening us and in trying to progress all the actions that are needed to move us forward. And I trust that the future council will continue in this stead to take care of all of us. So, thank you very much. Any other first-time speakers? Council Bordelon, you have the floor for your second time.
Thank you. Like many positions, as it's been stated, it's been hard to fill certain specialty positions. So I'm eager to see, has there been a plan or any coordination with any universities or collaboration as to, like, you know, your outreach? I know we do not currently have an HR director, so I'm just, you know, curious to see, like, what is our cast of net gonna look like when looking for this?
We'll definitely be talking to universities. I also know the resilience committee has been throwing that out there too. Same thing with Mr. Reiner. He's been out there, you know, trying to just see who's out there. But Kathy Winkle probably be the lead HR staff on it and we'll definitely impress upon her making sure we go very wide on this.
Thank you.
All right, we will vote on 2021-725, Sustainability and Resilience Manager Job Description. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Excellent. We are on to 2021-7351, Non-Union Retirement Plan Correction on page 33. And we will... Council Zepary, on page 33, please.
Resolution correcting retirement plan for non-union employees. Resolved to authorize the town manager to incorporate language into the retirement plan for non-union employees to clarify the eligibility for a deferred pension benefit for employees to separate with five or more years of service and reach the age of 65 as otherwise indicated in Section 4 of the retirement plan. Iso moved.
Second.
Moved by Zepary and seconded by Overy. And this was the item that we discussed last week, I believe, with Attorney Duggan.
Madam Mayor, for the record, can you just state into the record, like, what is actually the correction? Some people at home can understand.
I believe it's in the background. You're welcome to read it if you'd like.
So, just making sure the exact correction is as it states here.
Yeah, so it'll be what's right in the background. Making it clear that that 10-year reference that disagrees with the five-year reference is corrected.
Seeing no other discussion, we will vote on 2021-735, Non-Union Retirement Plan Correction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. 2021-7381, Non-Union Police Retirement Plan. This is on page 34. And I think we are back to Council Baumgardner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Should make Conrad work.
I thought I did.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll get Conrad, we'll get Council Heath next. Did I skip him? Yes. I apologize, Council Heath.
Resolution setting vesting at five years in the retirement plan for non-union police employees. Resolved to amend Section 10 of the retirement plan for non-union officers of the Town of Groton to reduce vesting from 10 years to five years and to authorize the town manager to incorporate language into the retirement plan for non-union officers to clarify the eligibility for a deferred pension benefit for employees who separate, who separate with five or more years of service.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Baumgardner and seconded by Overy. Council Bordelon.
I just had a question for John. So the motivation again to change this was to...
Match the other entities, the other town units, yeah.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on 2021-738, Non-Union Police Retirement Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Council Heath, you are being requested by demand here. Like, you're in-demand kind of guy and they picked a long one to give you here. 2021-399, Community Outreach Specialist Job Description. Please, Council Heath. This is page 35 in your packet.
Right, I'll make a motion to pass a resolution approving the public safety, community outreach specialist job description, whereas the 2021 Police Accountability Act required municipal police departments to evaluate the feasibility and potential impact of its department using a social worker. Whereas this social worker could accompany officers and other first responders at certain calls for service in which the social worker's experience and training could provide help. And whereas the Groton Police Department determined that the experience and specialized training this position would bring to the department and the citizens it serves would be extremely beneficial when responding to calls for service involving domestic violence, mental health, substance abuse, job loss, poverty, homelessness, serious accidents, other personal and family issues, and criminal behavior. And whereas this position would assist officers in assessing needs, providing interventions and follow-up services, and providing debriefing, psychological first aid to first responders following traumatic incidents. And whereas the department is proposing the creation of a public safety, community outreach specialist as this position would fall under the police department and would differentiate this position from other social workers working in the town's human services department. And whereas the public safety, community outreach specialist is a non-union salary position, the position will be budgeted for 40 hours per week and has a salary range of $57,401 up to $72,612. Therefore, now be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the public safety, community outreach specialist job description. Iso moved.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Bordelon. Council Bordelon.
I just wanted to check, John, for our town psychologist in the Human Resource Department, what is the income range there? Salary?
This is, I believe, well, I'd have to look it up.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I don't know it off the top of my head. I thought it was being meant to sort of match that, but there are some different duties, so I'd have to, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't remember if that was asked last, when it was discussed or not. I can certainly get that for you.
I don't recall.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure it's, you know, in line. I mean, I was doing some research on it and, you know, speaking to my mom who works in mental health therapy and, you know, it's a blanket, just if you work in police or you work in, you know, the hospital unit, it's trauma-driven, you know, psych, and the ask is very great on any of it. The, then again, the building where we have human resources, you know, the trauma might be a lot different because it's not in real time. So I just wanted to see where this wasn't comparable to what are we paying other folks in our, in our town staff, if this is a close match or far off.
I will need to double-check that.
Thanks.
Council Baumgardner.
I'd just like to acknowledge, you know, in recent years, you know, the topic of public safety has come up in the council and we've often had very spirited debates, but just like to acknowledge it's really nice to have consensus around this issue and really commend the council for pushing this forward, so. Thank you.
Yes, Mr....
Chief Pasaro just, he's watching. He just texted that he believes it's the same salary range as the, as the human services...
So he says the same salary range as the human services?
Right.
Thank you.
I will confirm, but that's what he believes.
The chief knows the salary of the human resources? Okay.
Council Baumgardner, you're yielding the floor?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will vote on 2021-399, Community Outreach Specialist Job Description. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. So we are on to 2021-7391, Pension Claim by Former Employee. This is page 36. I believe, Council Parker, please.
Resolution to accept proposed settlement. Resolved that the town council authorizes the town attorney and town manager to accept the proposed settlement of the former town employee's extra contractual claims regarding the calculation of pension benefits as set forth in the executive session at the October... Was that supposed to be October 26th meeting? October 26th, 2021? I think there's a clerical error. Town council meeting, town council committee of the whole meeting, iso moved with that adjustment.
Thank you. Moved by Parker and seconded by Overy with the correction of the date from October 25th to October 26th, which was the Tuesday meeting. Is that your intention, Council Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021-739, Pension Claim by Former Employee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One, Parker.
I just had a quick...
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Parker.
I have a quick clarifying question.
One moment, please. Madam Clerk, are you set with the vote? Is it Madam Clerk?
Sorry, yes, I am. Sorry, I'm doing the votes as you're, as you're speaking.
Thank you. So eight, zero, one abstention is Parker.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I have.
Council Bordelon, what did you need? We already voted that item.
That's fine. It's not the idea anything. I just had a clarifying question.
Talking over each other, go ahead.
Didn't you ask to speak to me?
I did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right.
Yes, I did.
I was just curious, John, the amount, is that being kept out for a reason? The dollar amount?
Well, if you remember, I, well, they have a, you know, the chief felt firm on it.
Because we're explaining the whole thing here, but I just didn't know why the dollar amount's being omitted.
Because we discussed it in a private meeting.
I understand that, but everything that's on here was discussed in a private meeting and we're talking about it now and it's on the paper, which everybody can see. So I didn't know if the dollar amount is considered private, is all, that's what I was asking. Because it's not on here.
Right.
We say everything else, what happened, but there's no dollars.
I think as I was taking that earlier motion, you know, written by the town attorney, I'd want to ask her before adding it in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if it can be added, will you amend it?
We can't amend it. You would have to redo a new one. We can make a note in the minutes.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to 2021-704, Cannabis Municipal Authority Setting a Public Hearing. Council Franco, please. This is page 37.
Make a resolution setting a public hearing concerning the prohibition of smoking or vaping of cannabis products on public municipal land. Resolved that the town council shall hold a public hearing on November 9th, 2021, at 6:30 PM related to the discussion of the potential prohibition of smoking or vaping of cannabis on public municipal lands. Iso moved.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. This is simply setting a public hearing at this point. Council Baumgardner?
Yes, I'll be brief. As I stated during the COW, I oppose this measure in large part because when I am opposed to this proposal, as is, as is, but I felt strongly that if we're going to single out cannabis, the prohibition of cannabis, we ought to include tobacco products as well. So without belaboring it any further, that's just where I stand on the issue and respect everyone's right to believe in what they believe is best for Groton. Thank you.
Council Bordelon?
Thank you. I can align my remarks with Council Baumgardner. I'm, you know, I think when doing this, it's, cigarettes, in addition to cigarettes, have been a major concern and cigarette smokes in public places like sidewalks and out in front of public buildings is another concern. And so I do think that there's one in the same. And I think with regulating them and the vape pens and smoke in general, if you walk by and you just see a puff, I think it's important to have it regulated as a, as a full unit to be able to, you know, I know as Chief Pasaro stated that, you know, their officers are trained to detect nicotine versus marijuana, but I'm talking about from a distance in a car, from you passing by, you have to see someone with a vape pen, you don't know if it's nicotine or what's in it. So I think it's important and from a public health standpoint, we moved up regulations in our state for purchasing of tobacco now as to 21. So we're moving in that and I think it'd be great to have had this wrapped in. So I'm all for the public hearing, but I hope once it comes back to the council that we would consider adding nicotine in there as well, tobacco use. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, did you want to add something?
I'm just gonna point out, Tom Clerk has her hand up.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, one, one second, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Burt, did you want to add something?
I was gonna point out that she had her hand up.
Okay. Thank you. So he was, he was drawing attention to you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Matt, Manager. The question is regarding, this is a public hearing. You see the problem that you had with the short-term ordinance, short-term rental ordinance, rapid ordinance. People think that this is something that you're trying to... And you have a public hearing. And really what you're doing is gathering information from the public, which is not a public hearing per se, it's a public forum. I don't know, I don't know. And the other, the second thing, and I thought that I sent this information to the planning director that, or maybe the, and the town manager, was that our code of ordinance is we have a limitation on where alcohol is consumed and this would perfectly go with where, with that, with that section of our code. It's section three, I believe.
Thank you. Are there any other first-time speakers before we go to second-time speakers? Council Bordelon, for your second time.
I do agree with the clerk, like, as was stated again tonight, when you say hearing, it sounds like very, like, firm, like we're having a hearing, you know, like, having some formal forum discussion. It's, again, people are gonna come speak about this, but I think it doesn't, it's really tough because we don't have a chance to kind of really respond in a true forum fashion and, you know, ask the clarifying questions per the rules the way they are, to be able to engage in full deliberation. So people come up here and, you know, say what they feel about it and they often walk away really not knowing where we stand or our answers. And so, and I just, I don't know, John, is there any way in our rules that we can have a more deliberative fashion as the, our town clerk stated, like a forum fashion where we can really engage the community more and having some type of discussion prior to or something like that? We need more of that.
The only reason it was set as a public hearing is that's what the motion passed was. So that wasn't my option, it's up to the council.
Right. I'm just saying again, I mean...
So you can have a public forum.
It's never my, it's never my option either, so it's just, I, you know, if I don't have the majority, it doesn't change my voice, but the point is I'm advocating that we do need to change the process. It's, it's here, but what are we doing? You know, we hear, but we don't react. It's just a bunch of people coming and talking and, and, I don't know, I just wanted to know if there's a way we could, if we have it in our rules that we could change it to be a little bit more of a forum with discussion? Is that, is that possible?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
So... So I guess I, I mean, would it be appropriate to amend the resolution to make it say hearing/forum? So that way that it's allowing councilors to interact in a more organic fashion with the people who come up to speak?
Are you, are you making an amendment, Council Bordelon?
Yeah, I guess I would. I mean, I...
Could you please state your amendment?
I'm just gonna add, as written, just slash hearing/forum. And the forum would allow councilors to have conversations with the folks.
Is there a second for the Council Bordelon's proposed amendment to change it to hearing/forum?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, did you hear her suggestion? Or her proposed amendment?
Yes, I, yes, I, yes, I did.
That was moved by Bordelon, seconded by Baumgardner.
Oh, I didn't see the second, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Bordelon, you have, let me see how much time. You have a bit of time left if you wish to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, I mean, well, I'm looking at my amendment as a whole. Actually, I also had tobacco products, then I also amended there too.
You made one amendment already.
I understand that, I know what I did, but I'm just thinking outside here.
And I'm, I'm thinking as well, and so I'm trying to think the best way to do this.
I could have him take back my second.
Can I point a border?
Yes.
It was discussed...
It was discussed in the COW that we cannot add tobacco in there because it would be off-topic, because the topic was cannabis.
Point of order to that, point of clarification, the attorney stated...
Okay, excuse me, excuse me. Wait, please. I did not take her motion yet. Okay, so she made a point of order. I need to listen to what the other counselor says. Say again, now, your point of order is going to, not to this particular amendment, but to what she's proposing. She's considering adding or changing her amendment to include tobacco. Is that what you're speaking to, Councilor Franco?
Yes.
So yes, your point of order is taken.
But my point of clarification, or point of order, however you want to take it, I remember the attorney stating very clearly that in that proposed, they could go together. Is that correct, John? That's what she said?
I'd have to relook at it. I think part of it was by what's on the agenda listed, that you're not listing is talking about tobacco products. I think that was the issue, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it was, it was a term dilatory motion where it would negate... No, that was the other thing that was tried. It would negate this. The topic on this was the, was cannabis municipal authority was what the topic was. It was not related to tobacco. So we were keeping the motions related to cannabis. If you so choose to take up something other than cannabis, I would suggest you make a referral and take it up as a separate ordinance, or a separate, not ordinance, excuse me, as a separate referral item where you would include smoking of any substance. But this particular item is on cannabis. So your amendment is to add forum to the resolution that's on the floor. Councilor Bordelon, do you wish to keep that amendment?
I just want to speak to what you said. Yeah, I can, I'll speak to that after. First, I'd like to just say that it was stated that tobacco could, but we chose, people here chose to take out tobacco. It wasn't that we could not. That's in my notes. It was a choice that you guys wanted to separate it. It wasn't that we could not add them together. So I just want to clarify that. But if it sounds like I'm not going to get that from this group, we can separate it and make it a long process, considering tobacco smoke has been a major health concern in this town and country for a lot longer, running parallel, but yet we're going to regulate this one first, so...
So Councilor Bordelon, are you amending, are you withdrawing your amendment?
I just want to...
Or are you keeping your amendment?
You spoke to what you felt was said that night, and I'm speaking to...
I spoke to the point of order, which I said...
Correct. I understand that.
The point of order was taken.
Yep.
So there is not going to be a motion to change this to include tobacco right now.
Right, but to say that it was not allowed is wrong.
So my question to you, Councilor Bordelon, is whether you would like to keep this amendment that's currently on the floor, which was accepted and seconded.
I understand that, but what I wanted to clarify is that that's not what was said that night, though. It was, in the thing that she read, it said tobacco and cannabis, and the council chose to separate it, if that's the case, but it's not that it can't be. That's all I want to clarify.
Okay, so are you keeping this amendment that's on the floor?
Yeah, I'll keep the amendment on the floor.
Thank you.
But I just want it to be clearly stated.
Would anyone else like to speak to the amendment that's on the floor?
It's just for...
Councilor Overy?
Just asking a question. What we have on the floor is notice of public hearing slash forum. Is that correct?
That is the amendment, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco?
I would like to notate, in the public hearing, it says, the purpose of the public hearing is to collect public feedback concerning the potential prohibition. So I think that's what we're doing, is, I don't think of it as just a bunch of people coming out and just talking. I think it's us hearing exactly what our public wants, and so we can make wise, informed decisions. And I don't know what a forum would be, and are we having, such as we did on the ban of plastics? I mean, are we having a presentation? Are we having speakers? Are we, I mean, I don't know exactly what a forum is. Or does it, is it just a break after we listen to a public hearing and then where we can talk, stop the meeting and go talk to people? I'm not exactly sure what a forum is. It hasn't been stated.
Do you have, are you yielding the floor?
I was hoping to get an answer.
Okay, so Council Boardelon, what did you envision for your, in response to Councilor Franco, please, what did you envision?
Just want the ability to be able to have us respond and talk and have an open dialogue, and having just a hearing where they come up and they state, you know, their name, their record, and yep, I don't think it should be here on the street, and we say, we sit here, and we listen, and the next one goes, right? And then the next one goes. That's great. We're hearing them, but there's no connectability. And so having the opportunity to be able to respond or have a forum where we have, I don't know, some boards up and talk about, before the meeting, where we talk about what this would mean by if something like this was passed, what those areas are mean, so they can get their questions answered before they come up and do their public hearing, and we're able to talk to them and hear their concerns. It could be done either any way the council really wants to, but I think it's important for them to come and publicly speak about this, to really have that dialogue and opportunity to understand what they're coming to talk about, and having a presentation of what this would look like.
Councilor Franco, Mr. Burt wanted to just add something at this point, then we'll go back to you for the rest of your time.
I mean, we can try to see if I lean, I think she said she was going to be here for that one. However, I do not have any time by Tuesday to put anything together, formal, where we work on the River View thing.
And I think GASP would like to be here, and I don't think that they would have the time to do something that quick turnaround. So if it is the council's prerogative to move ahead with the forum, I would suggest we change the date. That way, GASP can be here as well. Councilor Franco, I'll take it back to you. You have time remaining on your turn?
I think traditionally, a public hearing has always been a notice. It's been put in the newspaper. It's asking people to come out and have their say, and I just want to clarify that when I've been knocking, you know, many doors, some things that they missed was like they want a public hearing, they want to come out and have their voices heard. And I understand the connection of trying to be able to ask questions, but we've also had lengthy discussions with the Rules Committee pertaining to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. The reasons why sometimes we can only clarify, it's to allow people to be able to speak and have their say, and maybe they might not feel comfortable being questioned on the spot or discussed on the spot. They just, they're preparing to come and just have something to say, and they may not be prepared to answer questions or have a dialogue with anybody. And it's to make them feel comfortable that they can come speak and maybe just have their say. So I get it, but maybe what we can do is just have a public hearing. After the public hearing, we could take maybe a 15 to 20-minute recess to be able to talk to the people that have come out and have one-on-ones with them in a more...
But it wouldn't be, it would be more comfortable to just to talk to the people that came out in a forum.
I'm not sure you could do it in a recess without running a foul of the Open Meetings Act.
Can we leave the cameras running while we talk to people in here? I mean, like, I mean, when people talk to...
I think you would want to clarify the agenda item that, you know, you're going to allow a question and answer period. I think that would be what you would do.
Just because of the plastic ordinance, we had a presentation. The presentation was over, and then everybody just talked to each other, and we talked to the community, and there were no cameras.
Yeah, that was just, that was a forum. That was not a public hearing, though. So the public hearing was separate on that, from that evening. I'm going to throw something out to you all, and I'm not sure how you'll feel about this. This is something we could also leave if you want to, if you want to be able to bat this around a little bit more. I was ready to vote on this and send it to public hearing to get the public's feedback, but if the council so chooses, you could hold off on this and deal with it however you'd like at the next council as well. So we could postpone to the first COW in December if you want the new council to have a shot at this. As I said, I'm prepared to move ahead with it just as a hearing, but, because it will have to come back. You know, it's going to come back to everybody. You can't just have a public hearing and then end it. It's going to come back for committee of the whole debate, and I'm sure you'll get a lot of feedback, but I think asking people to try to do a forum with one week's notice, you're not going to get what you're looking for. Because if you're looking for both sides presenting, you won't get that in one week. So if the council's prerogative is to shoot for a forum, I suggest you hold off and give GASP and the attorney and even the chief a chance to be here and to prepare information for the public so that you have a well-rounded presentation. So I'm, right now, I'm looking to see what you want to do with this, if you guys want to, if you want to try to take it on or if you'd like to hold off. Councilor Melendez?
I mean, we could just do the forum and then do the, we could do the hearing now and then do the forum in the next term. I'm cool with that.
Okay. Is there any other feedback on how you'd like to proceed? I suppose we could just vote and then see if it dies or not, but it's good to be able to talk about it, so... Councilor Bordelon?
I mean, I could support holding out, too. I think it'd be important to get this up on the website. It's not posted really anywhere that this is even an option of discussion. One of those transparency items that I'd like to see more in the town, like, you know, it's before us today, but like, it should already be up, that council's considering having a hearing, you know, looking at ways, and there's ways to put that information out there to kind of get people knowing it's coming. So I could see, you know, I don't want it to be one side of when the hearing happens. I think it'd be important to have GASP, to have, you know, all the different people that are involved in this present, as well as the community, to be able to come out in a timely manner. So there's a way you could do both, as Councilor Melendez stated, do the hearing and then a forum. I was trying to save the time. We could do the forum first, which is a casual thing like we did with the boards and stuff, and have people talk about it, talk about what this means, counselors are present to talk to people, then the hearing would start, which would be, you know, going, and, but it would allow folks to have that time. But if we don't think we have enough time to do that, I don't want to rush something and then feel later that it was rushed, so I could see supporting, holding out a little bit longer. Is there a timeframe or deadline on this, John, at all?
So I just need to clarify, please, Councilor Bordelon, what are you saying? Are you saying you want the public hearing now, or you want everything held off to the next council?
I would rather hold off.
Everything?
Because I would like things to be done in a tight fashion with a lot of...
Councilor Bordelon, just for clarification...
Can I finish my thought, please?
I need an answer to know, though, what you're saying.
Right, and this is how I speak.
Are you looking to postpone the hearing and the forum until the next council?
Again, I stated, to have full transparency, I think you need to have both and to make sure the proper representation's there. So if you're saying, and John is saying, that he cannot get the staff and the people gathered in a timely fashion to do such, I would encourage holding off so it's not rushed.
Thank you.
And people have the ability to come out and be represented properly.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
And there's no deadline, you're saying, so on this, no? Okay.
Councilor Parker?
Okay, I'm listening to all the concerns, but we did post a notice of a public hearing. If I'm seeing...
No, it would not go until you approved it tonight.
Tonight, okay, so technically, it would have been dated for tomorrow, then?
Right.
For...
It would go in the paper in a couple days.
Okay.
Whenever they could fit it in.
So technically, we haven't posted notice of this yet.
Right.
All right, that's my question. Then I'm all set for waiting until the new council and making the decision later on?
Okay.
Because if we haven't posted in the newspaper, I was worried about paying something that we already said we were doing tonight, then, thank you.
Okay. I'm trying to think the best way to do this.
Hold on, let me think. We have two motions on the floor. Can we make, we can make a vote?
We only have one, yes. We amended and...
Yes.
Just not take the vote, just go on to the next item.
But if it lapses, if they would like to hold it to the next council, so then I would make...
Not everybody.
If this isn't, not everybody?
They on your active agenda items?
Put it on the open agenda item.
Just leave it on open agenda? As we're doing with return rentals?
Are we taking a vote on this?
Well, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out the best way to do this, so it's the least grief for the new body coming in, right? Like, I'm trying to keep it clean for you guys? So, Madam Clerk, I didn't hear...
If it's sitting on your open agenda, you can go on to any agenda you choose, including a subcommittee.
Mr. Burt, are you, are you in line with that?
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so if we simply do not vote at this point?
It'll remain on the open agenda.
We just move on? What's the will? I know there's an objection.
Do you want to speak? I would like to just take the vote on the, I don't think it needs to wait. It's a public hearing. We've had many of these votes, and this is how we normally do business. I guess people might like to have a forum to have a one-on-one with residents of our community. I understand that, and to be able to connect with the community, but this is only the first step. I mean, we could have a forum later on. We could have other public hearings. We could have more discussion. I mean, this is like very typical, normal council process, and I get people might want to change it now, but right now, this is how we've always done business. Thank you.
And my thing is, I don't, as I'm not going to be here for the next council, I don't want you to feel like we're trying to push anything through. So I want you who are returning to be the ones that decide what you want to do with this. So there are five of you sitting here that will be returning, so I would prefer that you five decide. We've heard from two so far. One would like to vote tonight on this, one would like to hold off. I don't know if the other, any of the other three of you wish to speak, or do you have a preference? Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, I do believe this matter should be, the next council should...
So leave it as an open agenda item?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Councilor Melendez or Parker, do you have a preference? So that's two that would like to leave it as an open agenda item?
I've, I'd like to do the hearing. I mean, it's just extra input from the community. I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, and Councilor Parker?
And as I asked, we haven't put the public notice out for the public hearing, because you said it wouldn't go out until tomorrow, after we decided tonight. It probably won't go out. You have to have, send it to the newspaper.
Correct. First thing in the morning, if you pass tonight, I would, I've actually got a draft email set to go, so I can, I was going to hit send after the meeting tonight, so...
And how quickly would the newspaper?
They said usually within one to two days.
So tomorrow's Thursday, and possibly get in a Friday or Saturday. And we would have to make sure that we posted it, at least that we put it in the newspaper, if we could do that on our website, if we do the public hearing, to give time for people to come out for the public hearing.
The public hearing could be in a month or two, or even...
Well, that will be set in a different time definite.
No, like, the forum could be in the future. The public hearing could just be now.
So right now, the, the way the resolution is, what's, what we will be voting first is resolution setting a public hearing slash forum, and that would take place on November 9th. That's what we have to vote first. Council Parker, I don't know if you, if you wanted to continue with your comments. Okay. So, I've lost track of how many times people have spoken. I don't know if someone else has been managing it, but this is just like, a little way to go. Council Bumgardner?
And I just would note, should the council move forward with an ordinance, this will go to a public hearing anyway. So, you know, if we, once, again, the council has a fully fleshed-out ordinance that, you know, we vote on, it will have to go to, before a public hearing, and so, no matter what, the public will have the ability to provide input on this issue if we move in that direction.
All right. Council Boardlon?
My concern is not, if it doesn't go out for two days, today's already the third, and this is for the ninth, and so, again, people work, and giving people four and five days once it goes in the paper is tough. And if we're going to have this, it needs to be properly representative with people that are for and against, you know, if you're going to have GASP, well, then you should have the pro, and if you're going to have the police chief, you should have other people who are pro, too, so it has to be fair and balanced. So, we could have as many as you guys want, I just think it's a waste of, like, we can condense this and move this out and keep it an open item and put proper notice out, but it's up to you guys.
Council Overy?
I think that we're losing track of what this is about, and what we're supposed to be doing. This is a notice of a public hearing, it's not a notice of people being here to answer questions. That's not the format that we go by. We want people to come in and talk about it. And from there, then we could invite different people in that could answer the questions correctly if we cannot. But you're just blowing this up more than it is. There's a format that the community is comfortable with, too, and I think tonight showed that they're comfortable to come in and talk with us. And then, you know, and we do have some directions in our rules that, when they come in, we can ask questions of clarification, and, which is fine, but that's, you don't want to, you don't want to change it so that people aren't comfortable, because they're not sure what's going on. So if you're going to have your public hearing, let people come in and talk to you. And then you'll see, okay, we need these people to really do an explanation, you know, publicly. You don't know what's in their mind right yet, so find out what's in their mind, find out what their concerns are, then go forward with it. This is a public hearing for the people to come in and talk to you, that's all. Just leave it alone, go forward, have it, learn, and move on.
Council Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think it's just a public hearing, like, if, if there's low turnout because the notice went out late, then we'll just do another public hearing later. I mean, if some people can make it on the 9th, but they can't make it on the day we set in the future, that just gives people two opportunities to come out instead of one. I just don't see the harm in doing a public hearing in six days. I mean, it would be better under circumstances to do it longer, but we don't have that time right now, and we can do that in the future if we don't have great turnout, so. I'd say two public hearings is better than one.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment, which is a resolution setting a public hearing/Forum, and the rest of the item is intact. So, if you're in favor of hearing/Forum on November 9th, please raise your hand. Boardlon? Any opposed? Raise your hand, please. Parker, Franco, Overy, Melendez, Zepari, Granatoski. Is Council Heed still with us?
Sleeping.
Yes, I am.
Council Heed, are you voting yea or nay on this, or abstaining?
I have my hand as a nay.
I can't see you, I'm sorry. And then abstentions? Council Bumgardner, so the amended motion fails, one in favor, Boardlon, one abstention, Bumgardner, all others opposed. So that takes us, are you good, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I just wanted to read what a public hearing is, because people seem to think that it's not what it is. What a public hearing is, and it goes with our charter, it's the scheduled time for members and staff of an agency who will meet for the purpose of receiving public comment on a regulatory action. So it's as if you have an ordinance proposed. So that's why people tonight thought, oh, God, you're going to have this ordinance? You're going to vote on this ordinance? And, you know, that's why I was afraid of having it advertised as an ordinance, you know, the last thing that was on next public hearing. So, you know, I just don't want that to happen again. People get confused, because you don't have an ordinance in hand, you're just trying to get information.
Yes, thank you.
But you need to give, you need to get information before you can receive it, too, you know?
Okay, so we are back to the main motion on the floor, which is setting a public hearing for November 9th at 6:30. Council Franco?
This is a motion, but it doesn't have by state statute staying for an ordinance. It is to get, clearly saying it is to receive public information, public feedback, and when I knock doors, this is what the public said they wanted. They wanted public notice so that they can come out and actually speak on important topics, and that's why we are doing this, and that's why it's come, it's come to our agenda to do this. It's not saying, it's, because normally, a public notice, as we've read in the beginning when we've seen them, it's per state statute, and it says the numbers, and it gives all the information on why we have to have it. This is simply saying on the second page, on page 38, it's to collect public feedback, and that's all it's about. So, I think it's fine, and I think the public will understand it when they read it, and when it says to receive public feedback. Thank you.
All right, Council Boardlon?
Again, I think if you truly want public feedback, and the word "hearing" is kind of like, it's a more rigid term, and giving, that it's not going to make it to the paper for two more days, and the hearing's on the 9th, today's the 3rd, that means the 5th it will be in there. If we're truly trying to be as transparent as we're trying to be, we would give more notice than that, and that's all I ask, is that we give more notice of things.
Can I get a point of information?
Yes.
How often in advance are they normally posted?
Well, when it's, when it's an actual ordinance, there are all kinds of hoops you jump through, right? But because this is a --
Not less, not less than five days, not more than 10 days, because you can't do it too far in advance, because people will forget about it. You can't do it too close, because it's too soon.
So, this is within the window?
This doesn't hold to true ordinance things, because this isn't an ordinance, so the way I see it, we can kind of do this how the council chooses, yes.
But it's within the window of normal? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call for a vote on 2021-704, setting of a public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Parker, Franco, Overy, Melendez, Zepari, Heed, Granatoski, opposed? Bumgardner, abstentions?
I'll oppose.
Bumgardner and Boardlon are opposed, any abstentions? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so that motion passes, seven in favor, two opposed, Bumgardner and Boardlon, zero abstentions. Seven, two, two, zero. Thank you. Okay.
Can I just?
Yes.
I will also put something out on Facebook tomorrow and try to get that out.
Thank you, that's great, appreciate that.
And on the website.
Okay, so we are on to, it's past 10 o'clock, so I need the consensus of the council to proceed on with the open agenda item review. Is there consensus to proceed?
Yep.
No?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. All right, so we are on to, I don't see any objections, so we're going to go ahead. The open agenda item review, which is on page 40, we have been working on the calendar here. Mr. Bert, is there anything you wanted to add? We've been trying to plot out where we're going and trying to keep it clean.
Well, I will say, this isn't, I'm not sure this is completely up to date, because when this agenda pack came out, it was Friday, when I mentioned I was out of the office, and I was asked to review of you on my phone, and all fault of my own, I forgot to look at this page of it on my phone, so this is not entirely up to date. And plus, once the new council is seated, they're going to want to go through and make their own priorities out of this, and maybe add or subtract things.
Yes. And just for notice, Council Overy has to leave us at 10:12. Yes, so we do have some things coming up on the 9th that we're going to be dealing with, but, yeah, I agree that some of these things are important items that the next council shouldn't be the ones to take up and determine the disposition, so that's where we are with that. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Sent by Franco, seconded by Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 10:13 PM, and that's the last council meeting for me. Call for two years.